Please join me for a moment of silence honoring the officers who lost their lives since the last meeting. And that would be Deputy Aubrey Phillips from the Alameda County Sheriff's Office. And now Ms. Nunes, would you please take a roll call?
Good morning. Barcelona?
Here.
Braun?
Here.
Brazil?
Here.
Donilon?
Here.
Doyle?
Dudley?
Here.
Yul?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Marsh?
Nieto?
Here.
O'Rourke?
Here.
Ramirez? Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to introduce to my left is William Toby Darden, our post-legal counsel. And to my right is Post Executive Director Manny Alvarez. And now it's a time for public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to comment on items on the commission agenda. Pursuant to commission policy, the commission chair will manage the public comment period in deference to the commissioners workload and meeting time constraints. Up to 15 minutes is the lodging beginning of each commission meeting for public comment on items on the agenda. Based on recent events, more people than usual may want to address the commission. Therefore, if required, we will go longer than 15 minutes, but may limit the period to no more than one hour as we have many topics on the cover on the agenda today. Members of the public who wish to speak are asked to limit their remarks to no more than five minutes each. If we have many people who wish to speak on the same topic, I, as the chair, may intervene and will ask that you limit remarks to no more than one minute. Pursuant to existing commission policy, the chair may conclude the public comment period if multiple speakers are voicing repetitive or similar statements and the 15-minute public comment period has expired. Please be advised that the commission cannot take action on items not on the agenda. Please remember that this meeting is being transcribed, so I may politely interrupt and ask you to repeat or speak slowly and clearly so your comment can be correctly captured in the transcript. So do we have anybody you'd have to speak on public comment? Seeing no one, we will move on. At this time, the executive director would like to address the commission. Executive Director Alvarez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you commissioners for affording me the opportunity to speak. Before I start my comments on SB2, I want to also mention that we're missing one former commissioner, Commissioner Lili Buie. We didn't read her name on roll call because she was promoted to lieutenant last month. So she, very, very well deserved, but she can't serve on the commission as a lieutenant in the position that she was, she was filling. So we will recognize her in May, but if many of you are wondering where Commissioner Buie is, she's, she's doing work as a lieutenant somewhere in the city of Sacramento right now. So we congratulate her. I'd like to just give you a quick update on where we stand with Senate Bill 2 since the last meeting, because I know many of you are getting questions either from some of your constituents, law enforcement agencies, or people in the legislature. So I just thought I'd give you a quick update since, since the last meeting at the end of February. So in terms of regulations, on March 25th, we released for public comment 21 regulations. Some of them were new, some of them were modified regulations, all to deal with Senate Bill 2. They're currently out for public comment, but we anticipate presenting those to you all in May, at the May meeting on May 25th. We also anticipate, obviously, we've got at least two more regulations that we'll be pushing through in the future on serious misconduct and a couple of other things. I want to thank, oh, the Office of Administrative Law, they've been fantastic in working with us on those proposed regulations in advance to make sure we're hitting the mark and that there'll be a smooth review process for everybody. So they've, they've been fantastic. They dedicated one person to, to help, help us through the process. In terms of hiring, we know there's been some discussion about how we're going to hire all these people if we do get funding come July 1. So at the last meeting, we mentioned that we were going to repurpose five existing positions, five vacancies to start the process with SB2. I won't get into the nuts and bolts of how that works administratively, because you don't want to hear it, and it's not a simple discussion to have, but there are five positions that were repurposed. One for an attorney position and one for four HR positions. Those are all called for in the budget change proposal, but we want to start the process now. We advertised the very first position on March 1st of this year. All of them have been advertised, and we're currently doing the reviews of the applications. Admittedly, we've not had a lot of applications for those positions at this time. I think, you know, everybody's having a challenge, I think, with hiring from, you know, whether you see it on the news or law enforcement agencies, it's definitely been a challenge. But I want to also thank the Department of Finance for giving us the concurrence to do this without the BCP ultimately being finalized. So Department of Finance provided their concurrence for us to do this under a rule that I won't go through. We also talked about technology at the last commission meeting. And as you all know, we started receiving demonstrations of software platforms in the fall. Our colleagues talked about that and mentioned some of the platforms that we looked at in the last commission agenda item, or the agenda item in the last commission meeting. We also started working with the California Department of Technology in December. We had almost weekly meetings or bi-weekly meetings with CDT on how we were going to move forward, and we ultimately submitted a proposal, procurement and a delegation proposal to them on January 10th. On April 1st, they provided the approval, the delegation approval, for us to move forward, and we submitted it out for bid that same day, I believe, on August, I'm sorry, April 1st. As you all may know, if you've seen the bids, or the bid proposal, or heard our discussion, we're attempting to move forward with a software platform called Mark 43. It is on the state software list for procurement. Many law enforcement agencies, both in the state, county, and city departments are using it, so that's what we're moving forward with for now. We're starting the review process this week, I believe, is when it closed. So we're starting the review process for the bids. Want to thank CDT for their engagement and their help with us early in the process. They were fantastic, and we are pushing and pushing to get this thing through as quickly as possible. So we do appreciate CDT helping us with that. Now I want to transition a little bit to funding, because as you all know, we spoke about the budget change proposal for next fiscal year to staff and get money to implement Senate Bill 2. So we had discussions with the Department of Finance and the governor's office almost every week, if not multiple times per week in the month of February, January, beginning of March. On March 10th, the Department of Finance came up with a proposal, which was a Thursday, and mentioned a Thursday, March 10th, the proposal to move $3.4 million of existing current year money over to a different account, so to speak, or a fund for us so that we could start the procurement of the software and various other things that need to be done for Senate Bill 2. That was done on a Thursday by the Department of Finance in cooperation with the governor's office. And on Monday, Senate Bill 119 was introduced before the Senate and passed by the Senate on March 14th to approve the money going over. So obviously, that was a very, very heavy lift for the staff, let alone, we really truly appreciate the Department of Finance and the governor's office helping us and having those weekly meetings and just moving this thing along. They did, did a really, really good job. Last, lastly, I just want to talk about communication with the field and what we're doing to communicate everything about Senate Bill 2 as we move along. So I sent an email to, to the commissioners announcing that we're doing online webinars or online information sessions over the course of the next two months. We had the first one on April 5th to talk about proof of eligibility and appointments. We had 500 people, or almost 500 people participate in that online forum. The next one scheduled in two weeks for a different topic. So we're going to continue those as we move forward for the next two months. In the month of May, we're going to start, we're initiating the process for an informational video to the field that we hope to get out in short order, but we will be starting that in May. And then in August, we will transition to regional informational, information presentation. So we will travel to regions, hypothetically, since I see some folks from LA County. We will go to LA County and perhaps over the course of three days, hold presentations that people can come to to see what SB2 is all about. So we anticipate doing that in August and moving that around the state. And then lastly, just in terms of our staffing, we had added an additional two position, two people to SB2 since the last meeting. So right now, we have nine full-time staff members on the SB2 transition team. They've done a great job. I think you'll notice that from all the material that we've presented today and what you've heard from me today. They've done a fantastic job, so we really appreciate what they've done. Appreciate the rest of the staff. A lot of them have had to help them with various things, but it's also caused a little bit of, there's nine staff members that are no longer doing their day jobs, and somebody else is having to, you know, do their work or, you know, suck up the, the other responsibility. So it's really been a, an effort by the all of post to make this happen, and I just want to thank all of them. And then lastly, I want to thank the, the, the crew behind us in Computer Services Bureau. Aside from pushing all the, the technology piece that I talked about with CDT, they've been putting together these meetings. It seems like they're up here constantly doing these webinars and such, and it takes, takes a lot of time, and we don't have staff dedicated fully to do that. And then lastly, Katie and Carrie for always putting these meetings together. So thank you, Katie and Carrie, for all the hard work. And I can answer any questions about any of that if you would like, but that's the update as to what we've been doing in the last few, in the last month or so.
Questions?
Yeah, I just have a question on the webinars. Are those recorded that the chiefs and the agency heads can go back and look at the ones if they missed it?
They are recorded, and we are putting them on our website. We ask for questions in advance, and we take questions via the chat and answer them. So they, they are available to anybody who couldn't see them on that day. Yes. They're on our website. Are they on there now, Jackie? It's already on there now? Yes.
Let's start a future webinar, so that will still be happening, and it's all the same content, isn't that correct?
They're different. So for instance, this first one was on proof of eligibility and appointments. There are, each, each one of them has a different topic. There's four topics.
Thank you. I forgot. Any other questions, Manny, and what do you have to say? Okay, I think we're about to enter the deep dive here, and I think it's important to get some perspective, so I'm going to put Manny back on again. Manny, give us the 3,000-foot description of this whole decertification process. Where does it begin? What's the middle and what's the end?
So starting on January 1, we will start receiving information from law enforcement departments that are called for in the penal code, primarily 30.1, 0.2, 0.3, various 0.3s. All post agencies will initiate reporting to post on allegations, charges, findings, investigations that meet the criteria of Senate Bill 2. We will also have to start taking complaints from the public starting January 1. We will be doing that via our website, which we talked about previously is already, for the most part, that platform's developed. It's mirrored after the Department of Justice's platform for taking complaints from the public. If you'll notice, one of the regulations that was pushed out during public comment on March 25th talks about what we do when we receive a complaint, what our process and our procedures are to follow. And those procedures are essentially that we, generally, we receive it and we push it out to the law enforcement agency for appropriate action. And, you know, obviously, we track all of that stuff. So that will start January 1. Departments will have 10 days to report that information to post via the software platform. Also, starting on January 1, there's various changes to the notice of appointment and termination, the NOAT, which I think now we're going to be calling NOA. There's various different identifiers on when people separate from law enforcement. So that will change how EDI looks on January 1 for appointments as primarily for separations. So once we start receiving the information, then we'll start processing it and see if it meets the criteria for decertification. And obviously, from there, it'll come to the Accountability Advisory Board first, then to the commission, then to an administrative law judge, and then back to the commission. That, in a nutshell, is the process. Individuals will have to be notified if they're subject to decertification. So we're working through those processes on how they're going to be notified and such. They have the right to a review. If they do not lodge their right to a review, I believe, within 30 days, then it's an administrative decertification. So they'll be notified, they have a right to appeal. If they appeal or initiate a review, then that starts the process where it goes, the board, commission, administrative law judge, and back to, to the commission. There's also some other backend things that we have to worry about in terms of the separations. There, starting on January 1, every separation, every separation will require an affidavit of separation. You'll see a regulation, a proposed regulation that's out for public comment on how those will work. But regardless if it's a retirement, a resignation, a termination, a resignation in lieu of, there will have to be a, an affidavit of separation that we anticipate having to share with any new hiring authority. So that will change that whole NOAT process. Depending on which box is checked, could cause an individual to be temporarily suspended until there's a resolution. If an affidavit of separation comes through that says a person was terminated for something related to SB2 or resigned in lieu of something that could be decertifiable under SB2, they'll automatically go into a temporary suspension and will not be able to work as peace officers until it gets resolved. That's kind of it in a nutshell. I mean, there's, there's a lot.
I know, but I was looking for the 3,000, and you gave it to me. Now, I want to talk about why. We have legislation which has passed, and in discussing what serious, the definition of serious misconduct, there were already, I think it's about nine categories that's in the legislation. Is that true?
Yes.
So of, we cannot take anything out. We can't take any words out, any, anything out of those nine areas. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're in the penal code, so you can't.
We're good. We're good. We can change the law, but aside from that, this committee isn't going to be doing that. What we can do is add things to that or clarify things. Is that true?
Correct.
Okay. And in preparing the commission with information from the community, two groups have been formed, Group 1 and Group B. Is that what you're calling them?
Correct.
Okay. And so Group 1 and Group B have given some thought to what the definition of serious misconduct would be, right?
Yes.
And we, as a commission, now this morning, are going to have three things. We're going to have the penal code section, then we're going to have Group A's thoughts about that penal code section, and Group B. And we, as a commission, are supposed to come up with some ideas that will go on to, for lack of a better term, a whiteboard that we'll see in front of us. And those ideas, at the end of today, will go back to you and your staff, and then you'll formulate statements, and then we will review them and vote on them in May.
That's correct.
Okay. I haven't heard that I've been correct that many times since I've tried a case. Okay, so I've got that. So let's go into the why. Why do you need this, why does post, why does the community need this meeting at all? If we already have the definition of serious misconduct, in order for the board and ultimately commissioners to make a decision, why does working on the details of this definition help?
Okay. So first off, you don't have to do anything, right? We could just leave them as is.
Right.
All the, the nine criteria that are defined in Senate Bill 2. The challenge with them is some of them are overly broad, and that's what the two workshops, Workshop A and Workshop B, addressed, is to see if there's some clarity or the narrowing of the scope to give the staff guidance, to give the board guidance, to give the commission guidance, and to give the ALJ guidance as to what really should be an offense that would cause a revocation. If you look at, some of them are literally a sentence. What does that sentence mean? What does excessive use of force mean? Physical abuse? What, what does that mean? Some of them are a little bit more detailed, but they, you know, are open to interpretation. And unless we have some kind of direction from the commission, and the board has some direction, and ultimately, the voting members of the commission, it's, there's just going to be masses of information. It's like, well, we don't know. We don't know what the commission would want to do with this, so just send it. So we're hoping to get some requirements, some minimum requirements, some desired requirements, some factors for, to be considered, just to give some narrower scope to what is said in Senate Bill 2.
Okay. And that, that narrower scope makes sense to me. Toby and I studied in law school, the question of what's pornography, and the Supreme Court said, you know it when you see it. Okay? Which left everybody up to Vegas. So I think the idea is that we are, as a group, going to help in terms of the definitions, tightening them up so that the future commissioners and the board are in a better position to say, oh yeah, this has already been considered. As a matter of fact, it's written there, we're going to go ahead and go forward versus each time, but he throws up their hands and says, for lack of a better term, what is pornography? So we're going to do that. Carrie, can you put up what it's going to look like for each one? By the way, this is the one and only consent item on our list, so we won't be spending the day doing this, except for the pizza break when the pizza arrives. And for those of you that haven't given Carrie your $11, I'm suggesting 15 or 20 to pay for everything else that the staff has paid for.
Madam Chair, just for informational purposes, as they're getting it up on the screen, each commissioner has that agenda item, the attachment that was published.
Right.
This document in front of them for reference as well.
Okay, so here we are. So the, the first one is dishonesty, and the definition is in that kind of lavender color. And then you have what Workshop A thought should be augmenting that statement, and you have what Workshop B is thought to do that. Ultimately, we are going to have a discussion, and I'm going to get a sense of consensus. Sometimes I'll just feel the consensus in the room, because I have a pretty good handle on feeling the rooms, this particular room, in terms of where we're going. Other times, I might just ask for a show of hands, because I'm going to be unsure. But ultimately, what we're going to come up with is on that whiteboard, we're going to have what this group generally feels they want to do, in the first case, with dishonesty. So who will be taking down the ultimate statements, the whiteboard? Okay. All right. So any questions about how we got here, why we're here, and what we're doing? Awesome. Then let's start with the first one. I, I won't read it to you, because you can all read. So let's take a minute to read the definition of dishonesty, then Workshop A's view, Workshop B's view, and then let's just open the discussion and dig in.
Does continue on to the second page if you're looking at the screen.
Let me be a little clearer, sorry. The serious misconduct, at the very top, the Workshop A, Workshop B, what's the term you've been using for that?
So at, at one of the workshops, or at both of the workshops, they wanted to come up with an overarching definition of serious misconduct, and that's what that is. Obviously, that's open to debate and discussion as to whether that language is proper or whether there is actual need for an overarching definition.
So I'm going to suggest, after we finish the process of going through the nine, we come back to the question, do we even need an overarching? Overarching, what are you calling it? Overarching?
Overarching definition.
Definition, okay. So let's leave the serious misconduct overarching definition until the end of our process, and let's focus first on the dishonesty. Aubrey's going to give us words of wisdom first.
I don't know if it's words or wisdom, wisdom or not, but, but I think this might help us. So the, the question as to whether or not we need an overarching definition goes directly to the language of the legislation. The language of the legislation says that post shall develop a definition of serious misconduct, which shall include the following, and then it lays out the nine specific criteria. So that, there are two ways that the commission can go. The first is the commission can say, serious misconduct is, and then just go directly into the nine. And then with those nine, perhaps we can help clarify or give other parameters of how the commission views those nine. The other possibility is that, since the legislature delegated to the commission the ability to define serious misconduct, and it said it must include certain things, the legislature didn't limit the commission. So the question is to whether or not there should be a separate overarching definition of serious misconduct is going back to the, to the language of the legislation. And post does have the ability to develop an overarching definition, which might give the commission, or the board, or the division jurisdiction to review certain acts which are potentially disqualifying, that should result in certification, but that do not fit within the nine. So I just thought that's something perhaps we could keep in mind as we're going through each of the nine. You'll see as we go through them that, based on the language of the, the legislative language on each of these nine areas, it's limited. And there may be, for example, with dishonesty, as we talk about that, there may be some instances of dishonesty which are not covered by that legislative, the specific legislative language. And the commission can certainly say, well, that's, the legislature has said this definition of dishonesty is what applies, and that's all that, that, that we're going to have in the regulation. Or the commission could decide that it wants to go broader. So that's, that's the idea. So I apologize for interrupting, but I thought that.
No, thank you for interrupting, and that's very helpful. Let me make sure I understand the difference. So the first one we'll talk about is dishonesty. We'll talk about the small paragraph that's written there, Workshop B and Workshop A's thoughts about that. And someone could, if someone felt something wasn't included in there, they could do one of two things. They could just take a note and say, Gene, we get to the end, we'll, we'll think, I'd like to bring up the issue of also adding this to this general discussion. Or they could say, for instance, general dishonesty relating to the reporting, investigation, or prosecution of a crime, and it talks about a law enforcement report. Someone may say, well, I also think it should include any body worn cameras. I'm making this up. So we could either, you could either say, let's add body worn cameras to the dishonesty, or let's talk separately with the overarching definition about adding body worn cameras. So you've given us this so we can think about it?
Yes.
Okay. So we could either include things in our notes, and ultimately, perhaps in the definition, or later on, we could just say, let's talk about dishonesty as it relates to a body worn camera, or whatever of the theory we have.
Right.
Am I connecting with people? Are you good? Rick?
I just have.
Mr. Brazil?
I have a question for Toby. So we go through this process, we decide in May, we vote, and we accept whatever that is. In the future, if something comes forward that needs a modification to this, one, is that doable?
Yes.
And then two, so a year or two from now, new technology comes out, there could be a tense added to it?
Yes, that, that, that's exactly correct. And Manny, certainly, your regulatory team can jump in as well, but we amend regulations all the time. And, and my view is that since this is really completely new territory for posts, I think there's going to be some element of learning as we go, and we're going to have fact instances that are going to come to us, and we're going to see there's a problem with the particular scheme. And so there may be amendments made by the legislature, or staff may come back and say, or the commission may request at a meeting, that there be an amendment or modification to add something or subtract something, or whatever. So yes, I, I personally think this is going to be a living, breathing.
Let me, let me comment on the subtracting something and tell me if I'm correct. Only the legislature can change the dishonesty definition that we have. So we can't come back later and take out anything that the legislator has put in. We can go back to the legislature and say, could you take that out? We can take out what we We can take out what we've put in, and we could put in more information.
Correct, that's absolutely right.
Okay, Manny, do you want to say anything about that?
I think you summarized it all properly. But yet, when the discussions were happening about Senate Bill Two, there was definite discussion about it should be a living, breathing document. What's applicable today may not be applicable, you know, 10 years from now. And you can add, you know, there's nine. You have to keep those nine, but you may have 10 or 11 or 12. So yes, he stated it correctly.
Thanks for bringing that up. And Maria is now stepping up.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt. I know that we want to make this a living, breathing document. However, if it's a regulatory piece, it's going to have to go back to the OAL process, which may take a significant amount of time. So that's my only concern about, yes, you can massage this as we go along, but that process is going to be delayed.
Thank you. Please feel free to stay there. Thank you. Is that the same as please stay? Okay, everybody. Any other questions about the procedure? Toby, you're good? Manny? Maria? Okay. So dishonesty. Who would like to discuss, who would like to start the discussion about anything they'd like to add to that definition? Terrell, if I may?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Braun? Is your microphone on?
It is.
Great.
I would like to add the term substantive to dishonesty. Dishonesty, it needs to have, it needs to have meant something when the person lied about something, and not so much, no chief, you look great in that suit. Okay, that could be a lie, but doesn't mean anything. Or if somebody calls them sick and went to a baseball game instead, does that happen? Yes, should they lose their post certificate over that? That's up to the agency. So I would like to see a word. Kelly and I were talking about Commissioner Gordon, and I were talking about substantive, egregious.
I love that idea, and I think we all do. But one person substantive is going to be another person's not substantive, is going to be another person's egregious. And I think any help we can give future commissions by really delineating that or bringing it in just a little bit more. You know, whenever I go to trial on a case, I have to look up whether it's great bodily injury, serious bodily injury, traumatic bodily injury. At least then I can go to the definition of those three terms when I'm trying a case. Substantive also is a legal term, but I'm not sure how we want to use it here, or if there's anything we can do to give laypeople. Not only am I concerned about future commissioners, but I'm concerned about law enforcement officers on the street. Shouldn't they have a better handle on what substantive is? So you're saying, right?
Yes, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, folks, I'm going to have a lot of this. I apologize. So as a lawyer, prosecuted these disciplinary cases against peace officers as well. And, you know, one of the things that, as a lawyer, trying to prosecute a case against a peace officer is that I have to prove each element of the charged act. So I understand your point, and I think it's a good one. Perhaps if we got to a broader, more overarching definition of dishonesty. So the commission mayor may not decide that this is necessary with respect to the specific acts that are targeted here, which is the prosecution investigation, or, sorry, the reporting investigation or prosecution of a crime. That probably is substantive in and of itself, at least that would be the thought. That's not a comment about that you look nice, or the dress looks nice, or whatever. Or in the investigation of misconduct. So it may be that it's not necessary to have that sort of a limitation on these specific regulatory definitions, to the extent that the commission wants to have a separate regulatory definition of this. But again, as a lawyer, as I sit down to prepare a case to go in front of the ALJ, I need to know, how do I prove that it's substantive? That's the question. And so before we add regulatory language like that, we just need to think it through so we can give specificity to the prosecutors and to the ALJ. So the ALJ knows, okay, this is or this isn't substantive. So that's the only point I wanted.
I agree. And I know it's a nebulous word. It was more to the Workshop B term of any dishonesty is, should all, small lies lead to big lies? So not, you know, we always say that you lie, you die for a law enforcement career. But we say little lies all day long, and they don't, you don't lose your job over it. So I just wanted to make that clear for the working law enforcement officers, that they can understand that not everything is going to get you lose your post certificate. And I don't know the right word for it. I just wanted to address that.
And I would just like to add to that.
Please.
So I think, you know, as part of that, I think, and this may go to the overarching, but I think, you know, as part of this legislation, I think the burden of proof is, and Toby, correct me if I'm wrong, clear and convincing, right? Which is also very subjective. But I think adding language that says, you know, that it is willful, and we can show that it's willful in terms of how that dishonesty affected the case. And I don't know the right terminology. That's why we have you, Toby, maybe to help us with that type of language. But I'm with Commissioner Braun on making sure that we don't make this extremely broad and very difficult. I look at it from the point of the community because they want specific expectations. I also look at it as a point of how I, as a police chief, can set clear expectations. I mean, she's right. Like, we teach our officers, you lie, you die. But we also know that what an officer sees is not also what a witness sees. And that is not dishonesty. That is a different point of view. The officer based their observations, and we talk about, you know, and these are things that, over the last 27 years that I have learned, you know, tunnel vision and different things that happen when you are in that moment that you don't necessarily see all these other things that other people see. So when you write your report, and we always say, if you don't, if it's not in your report, it doesn't, it doesn't exist. I'm sure, you know, the chair understands that as a prosecutor, right? If it's not in your report, it didn't happen. But you don't see everything that happens. So a witness may see something different. That doesn't mean that the officer lied. That is their point of view at that moment. So I think it's important that, when we're discussing this definition of dishonesty, that we take that into account, and that we can set up things that are, you know, there's always going to be some subjectivity to this. But I would caution against, you know, if you call it, like her example, you call in sick, we're going to take away your certification. You know, there are these things called mental health days, and, you know, it looks different for the newer generation than it does mine, you know, we, but they probably will live along longer than we do as a result of that. So I think there is, I, like Commissioner Braun, want to make sure that we are putting something substantive in that, that we can show whatever that proof and that intent is of it, and not just make it overly subjective of, you know, well, I, this witness saw it differently, so that must mean that the officer is dishonest. Because that is not necessarily the case. Maybe Toby can help us craft something that addresses that.
It's a very interesting point. And the truth is, for all the law enforcement executives here, you've probably seen IAs where, basically, there has to be a decision made by the investigator or by the department as to whether or not there was dishonesty. And sometimes there's a finding of dishonesty just because the investigator credited another report over the officer's report. Therefore, the officer's report was determined to be dishonest, or statements were determined to be dishonest. And I understand completely what you're saying, that sometimes it is very subjective. It's a question of how the officer saw something versus how somebody else saw that. So that makes sense. But I guess my question, in terms of this thought process, which I completely understand, again, to me, it strikes me that this concern is more of a concern if we go beyond the specific regulatory language. If we're just looking at the specific regulatory language, does the commission think that we still need to try to include this kind of carve out that makes sure that somehow we have to ensure that it's substantive or willful or whatever? Again, important if you're talking about a sick call out or a compliment. I agree. If we're going to make that something that someone can lose their career over, then perhaps the commission wants to ensure that.
Would adding such a word as intentional?
Yes, maybe. There are lots of words that we could add. But intentionally, again, I'm going to go back all day long to Chief Braun's comment. Someone sees the dress, hates the dress, intentionally decides to say they love the dress because they want to kiss up to the chief. So that was intentional. So that, we're not looking at really intentional. But some of the things that one of you said was, I believe it was you, Commissioner, was how the dishonesty affected the case. Now we're talking about something we can put our hand around a little bit. So I'll be using my cellphone throughout this meeting. I'm looking up legal terms. I'm not texting my children. So one of the words I came up with was material. And I think material is a legal term that we're all comfortable with. And it's here used in the definition, in the definition. So, you know, quickly, the word material states as true, any material matter which he or she knows to be false, and every other person who testifies, declares, opposes, certifies, and depents of perjury, that it's false. But we can find a more, a better description of material. And I think material may give us the substantive. What's your thought about that?
All those are possibilities. But again, I guess my, the fundamental question that I have in light of this discussion is, if we're not for the moment talking about a broader definition of dishonesty, let's for a moment just focus on the specific language of the legislation. If we are only talking about dishonesty relating to the reporting investigation or prosecution of a crime, do you still think that there needs, that we need to put an additional limitation on that to say that even if it is dishonesty that relates to reporting investigation or prosecution, we want to put an additional layer of proof on that to say, on top of that, it also has to be material or substantial or willful? Is that where the commission as a whole is going? Because that would be, again, now we're adding an additional item of proof to, to an attempt to move forward to remove certification on that specific ground. So that's the question. See Commissioner Gordon saying yes?
No, and I'm feeling the need for material. Because I'm very concerned about someone saying, whatever else would be dishonest, that wasn't material.
Yes, and that's exactly my point.
Okay, other comments? Please.
Will this new board, will they be following these guidelines?
Yes.
Okay, so their interpretation may not be ours.
And then we always override them.
Right.
So we get it, we send it to them, they come back with something. We review the material, and we think, gee, that is not a reason that we would have suggested. And we're the final word.
So and all the material would be the complete investigations, all of them? So we would know everything before we made that decision, right?
I think we, I don't know if we'd know everything.
Well, I'm talking about everything that there is to know that's printed, that's been investigated.
Let me check this out. So my understanding is that we would get the same material that the board gets.
Correct.
Okay, so same material. And certainly, we could do further inquiry. If there was something, if you got something from the board, you reviewed it, and all of a sudden, you wanted more information about that. There can be subsequent investigation, I believe. Toby, I'm looking at you. Subsequent investigation? You pausing? Could, so if Commissioner Barcelona is looking at something, it wasn't something that was handed to the board initially, but it's something else he wants, could he ask for that?
The commission has the ability to direct post staff to conduct investigation. And that would be, if you have a follow-up interview that needs to be done or something like that, you can direct post staff to do that. Obviously, we would, we would ask the agency to do it by regulation, the proposed regulations. But you do have the ability to send it back and ask for more.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, it's concerning to me when it talks about any dishonesty. And I think you get back to the dress question, or, you know, I saw someone take a candy bar or something like that. And I mean, I'm wondering whether that's, that's the level that we want to start invoking licenses for, because that's any dishonesty.
So if you're saying, is that the level? I think you're going back to this concept of substantive material. You don't want to hear about the candy bar. You don't want to hear whether she liked the dress or not.
Can we put that in writing? I mean, is that what we're going to do today? Can we put that, can we actually articulate that? That's what I'm, I mean, I'm looking at the two legal scholars. Are we going to be able to write that?
Absolutely.
Again, if I may.
Thank you.
We don't have to worry about the candy bar example if we're not going to go beyond this statutory definition in our regulation. So again, if it just relates to, it's going to have to relate to, according to this, this is limited, reporting investigation or prosecution of a crime, or reporting or investigation of misconduct by a peace officer. Those are the only two instances which this, this, which the legislation empowers the commission to take action with respect to dishonesty. Well, yeah, I mean, I suppose if somebody stole a candy bar, yes, that certainly relates to, well, reporting investigation or prosecution. Again, this is the kind of thing that lawyers have to deal with.
Just wondering how we articulate that. Is it going to go down to that level? You know, because there's going to be so many lower level types of complaints that could be made. You know, could be misuse of, let's say, you see it all the time. It angers the public sometimes when you, when my kids are all grown now, but when people would drive to school to drop their kids off, and you'd see a deputy sheriff car drop off a kid, or they would see a car with a knee plate drop off their child or something, and then a complaint. And that sort of thing as well, would that be, that would maybe be a dishonesty? And would that come to the point where you?
And again, I think the important thing for the commission to keep in mind is that, that what the commission is looking at is the question of whether an individual should be certified from being a peace officer in the state of California, period, right? This is decertification. So some conduct may be the basis, it may be a violation of policy. It may warrant some sort of discipline and so forth. But the commission can decide whether or not any given comment should be the basis for decertification of individuals. And the legislature's given us, again, the basic, those two phrases.
Well, it seems to me there'd be a lot of, I don't know about a lot, but there'd be decisions that we would come to, and we'd say, that's a department disciplinary issue, and it shouldn't come to this level. Can we make that decision? Is that being made in other states? Are they doing those? Are other states that already have licensing, are they making those decisions such as we're discussing?
Yes, Oregon and a few other states doing that. But let me tell you why I'm now becoming a proponent for adding the word. Because I'm hearing your conversations, and I like some of these legal definitions. So material, a description of the quality of evidence that possesses such substantive probative value as to establish the truth or falsity of a point in issue in a lawsuit. Okay, a little elaborate. A material fact is an occurrence evident, excuse me. A material fact is an occurrence, event, or information that is sufficiently significant to influence an individual into acting in a certain way, such as entering into a contract. So at least that gives us something rather than the candy bar and the dress. Are you feeling that you would like another word in there?
I just think we need to have room for discretion and the ability to say, this doesn't reach the level of decertification, and it should go back to departmental discipline.
And as your mind is a chief, wouldn't that be something you'd say, well, that's just not material, that's irrelevant, that's not substantive? Yes, it's dishonesty technically, but no, we're not going to take away your badge and gun because you did that.
Yeah, I think, I think administrations should have that ability to do that. Because people make bad decisions or wrong decisions, but they're not to the level of, you know, and you get back to willful or intentional, and was it meant to cause great harm and those sorts of things? So there has to be some discretion in there as well. And I think we should be able to do that, to send it back to the department and say, it's not to our level of licensing, this is a departmental disciplinary issue.
Is that possible? The commission would always have the ability, though, to look at any given fact pattern and decide that they did, the commission did not believe that it was dishonesty. So I would think that with the review of any package, that if the commission as a whole looked at it, they could, the commission could conclude, well, we think that this is a matter of interpretation. It doesn't rise to the level of what we consider to be intentional dishonesty or whatever. So again, the question is, to what extent do we need, as a body, to establish additional, an additional layer of proof to either guide? Because we have to do two things. We have to guide the field because every individual every individual in California, every peace officer could be affected by decertification. They have a due process right to know whether or not conduct they engage in is sufficiently severe that it could warrant them losing their right to practice the profession. And two, we have to give guidance to the ALJ, to the prosecutors, to the board, to the commission in terms of whether or not any given fact pattern is a violation of the regulation that's sufficient to, to, to permit, to permit it to move forward.
Commissioner Brazil?
Yeah. I want, I want to go back to what Toby said quite often. I think we are taking the word dishonesty and applying other things outside of the language that's written here. Unless wearing the dress was actually a crime, which it wouldn't be. I, I like what you're wearing today, honestly. This is very, very restrictive in the definition of dishonesty and when we can apply it. And intentional is in the language. We may consider defining it a little bit differently, but it, if you look at the, the first word in the third line, false statements, intentionally filing false reports, tampering with. I think it's clear that the legislature said intentionally doing these things and filing false reports. And again, it's very restrictive in where dishonesty lies. Stealing a candy bar would fall into a different section in here, not in the dishonesty section, unless they lied about it in the internal affairs investigation or in a report. So I, I think it's important for us, just my own opinion is the title is dishonesty, but the language when it's applied is very, very restrictive and very tight, in my opinion. We might want to change intentional somewhere. I get, I understand that. But it's related to reports, filing reports, tampering with evidence, those type of things, which is really egregious stuff and wouldn't apply to. I call it insick. I like what you're wearing. That wouldn't apply. We would never see that here.
So if we were to hone in a little more, and then I'll get to Commissioner. I wanted to say this before you speak, Commissioner Long, so I want to know what you think about this. So if we did dishonesty, then, then wrote, period, then wrote, dishonesty is a material, material intentional, okay, so dishonesty, a material intentional act of dishonesty relating to the reporting, blah, blah, blah. So we'd be adding a material intentional act of dishonesty relating to. That would be words we could add, which could hone it in a little, but is not taking us into every specific. So we have intent and we have material. Commissioner Long?
Yeah, just for the, for your reading, reading of the room, I think I want to associate myself with Rick's comments and also Toby's in terms of going back to the definition. It's not just the word, it's, it's everything that follows. But also, I think it's also important to take a look at the workshop A and B and look at, you know, what the law enforcement groups have told us and what the advocates have told us. And both said it should be intentional and willful, you know. So I think working that in there would be also a nod to our, you know, working with both of the workshop groups, both of whom were, you know, brought a lot to the table. So I, I think that's worth noting.
So in doing that, Commissioner Long, it would just be dishonesty, colon, a material intentional slash willful act of dishonesty relating to. So using their language in there, honing in a little more. I see a couple of nods. This side of the table, how are you? Any thoughts over there? Okay. Commissioner Yule, how are you feeling about this?
I, I think Commissioner Long has expressed my thoughts, quite frankly. I think adding those two preambles to
Okay, anything else on just, so right now, what I'm hearing, and then we certainly haven't finished dishonesty, is dishonesty, period, a material intentional slash willful act of dishonesty relating to the reporting of blah, 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 blah. Anybody uncomfortable with those word, that wording? Okay, so who's Carrie, or who's going to do it? Katie, would you, I'll say that again, and this is just going in the notes section. This is nothing that we voted on or anything. It's just a thought that this body has had, which is dishonesty, and then it would be a period. And then the sentence would actually start with a material intentional slash willful act of dishonesty. And then the rest would go back to the regular body of it, relating to the reporting, et cetera, et cetera. Slow down. I'll try it again. Dishonesty, period. A material intentional slash willful act of dishonesty. Then it goes back to the body that is written, relating to the reporting, et cetera. Slash willful, yeah. Okay, that's a thought. That's a thought we're all living with at the moment. Other issues relating to dishonesty, having reviewed workshop A, workshop B, and your own thoughts? Yes, please. You two jump in anytime. Don't ask, may I?
All right. Yeah, and if I may, if I may ask
Please.
for permission, if we could have one of the bureau chiefs come and sit up at the table, Jackie Nelson, if she could, because she, she's going to have to be the one
Please.
with one of our other bureau chiefs, putting this together in case she has some questions or concerns. So one is this on duty, off duty? Does it apply? That's a question that should come up. And then going back to some of the comments or the questions from Commissioner Barcelona about how other states do it. Other states don't have this broad, these nine categories. They're not that broad. They're more specific. So it's easier, I think. The commission, the board in Arizona, staff have to come to the commission, say, here's a fact pattern. Do you want us to look into this further? That's not the case here. Here, we have to bring it to you. So as Mr. Darden mentioned, we want to clarify it for the board, the commission and the ALJ, but we also need to clarify it for post-staff. Because we want to send, we don't want to just throw anything at the wall. We want to send to the board what you all want us to send, what you think is decertifiable. So the language definitely helps us as well. And I just want to emphasize that because we will be the first ones to take a, you know, take a review of it.
And and if I may as well, when we're putting language like this up on the board, I just want to make sure. I think that we understand the, the overarching concern that the commission has. But when we sit down to actually draft the language, for example, as a lawyer, it kind of gives me fits to see intentional slash willful. Because again, intentional and willful may have different elements of proof, which may be different from material. And so now my question is, do I have to prove all three? And what's the basis of the definition? So I, I hope that, that the commission is, what the commission is doing is giving us guidance and that, understanding the guidance, we can then try to put together the best regulatory definition that is in accord with the spirit of the guidance, but maybe not necessarily follow that exact language, if that would be problematic from a proof perspective.
And I think the slash would certainly be a problem. So it would be, it has, it would have to be a comma because they are two legal, two different legal positions. And your thoughts, Jackie?
Actually, I don't have anything specific at the moment, other than the one difference, the difference between the two work groups was work group A wanted only on-duty conduct to be addressed, and work group B wanted both on-duty and off-duty. And that's a consideration. I'm not sure if you could take it up or what the problems are. Can you hear me now?
I think so, but let's try it again.
Okay.
Between workshop A and workshop B in terms of what?
Yeah, workshop A wanted the dishonesty actions to be solely based on on-duty conduct. And workshop B wanted to include both on-duty and off-duty. And so just for discussion clarification for this board to consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to put Commissioner Donaldin on the spot for the fun of it. On duty or off duty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just, if I can digress for just a second, because the first time I have the floor. And I want to thank Manny for his remarks. And also you note that he thanked many people, ALG, HJ, the governor's office, et cetera. I want to thank the members of the post-staff. This is a staggering lift, even just sitting here as commissioners. We're dealing with just a paragraph, and it's taken us over an hour. And just think for a second about how much the staff here are trying to lift this significant issue to get it up and running by the first of January, I think is a feat that I am confident is they're all going to make. But I'm very respectful and humbled by the amount of work that's going into it and appreciate it. And then returning to this.
No, I want to interject now. I'm so glad you said that. You speak for all the commissioners in saying that, so thank you very much.
I, I think everyone here, whether you're, have a title by your name, are a department head, or work in its post, are all on the same page, trying to get this over the goal line, and I appreciate everyone's efforts. I would say, just for me on a whole, and, and listening to what Toby has said in particular, and where I'm going to lean is what's written by the legislature and what's written there. And you had two ways of moving forward for the day, Toby. For me, the outline is already there. It's in the legislation. It's lined out. You look for an overarching definition of serious misconduct. It's these nine particular items, and that's it. And becoming overbroad, I think, is a mistake. And we don't know where this is going, speaking to Commissioner Barcelona's comments. We don't know where it's going ultimately. And I think we have a blueprint in front of us in the legislation to get this up and running. And it'll serve us well if we stick with what we were given from the legislature. That's my humble opinion. And I think muddying it just makes it more and more challenging for both a serving cop and for those who are going to sit in these seats years from now and generations from now.
Let me suggest that in some ways it can do that, but in some ways it can simplify. For instance, the question about on duty or off duty. That's kind of black and white and gray, but it's more black and white than most things. So what is your thought, Commissioner, about what would the dishonesty we're talking about? Let's say it's absolutely dishonesty and it's a material thing, but it's off-duty.
And this goes back to the comments that Commissioner Braun brought up from my perspective, where you go out to a function and your wife's dress isn't the greatest, but you say it is. And I think you focus on what our duty is and our service, and it's on duty.
Commissioner Long, your thoughts? Thank you.
Yeah, I actually couldn't agree more with Barry there. I think it should be on duty.
Does anyone think off-duty? Yes, Commissioner Brazil?
I, I don't, well, let's, let's hypothetical this. So off-duty, I can go in and tamper with evidence. And if I do it off-duty, it's not dishonesty. Again, the language is very specific. It's false reporting, it's tampering with evidence. I don't know how you can do that off-duty. I mean, it's, it's, it's not about whether you're on duty or off-duty in this one. It's if you're either tampering, you're destroying, or lying in a police report, or you're not. It's because it's very specific to that, that.
That's exactly right, Commissioner. And so my thought on that one is that if the commission wants to say on-duty only, it certainly can. But what that means is that if you have an officer when off-duty that files a false report of a crime, then we would not have the ability to look at that and potentially take action with respect to certification because we've limited it. If we don't take that action, we do not limit it to on-duty only, then the commission would have the jurisdiction to look into any instance in which it's dishonesty that related to the reporting, investigation, or prosecution of a crime, whether on-duty or, or off-duty, and the same thing, the investigation of misconduct. So it may be, all of you have been involved in IA investigations. It may be that, you know, an officer is interviewed. Well, now I suppose if they're interviewed, they're actually on duty, aren't they? But just in, in some instance in which the investigation of misconduct by a peace officer is, there's dishonesty with, with the officer somehow being off-duty. And if we do add that language, then we're limiting what the commission can do. If we don't add that language, then we just go right back to what the legislature said. Is it dishonesty? Does it relate to reporting, investigation, prosecution of crime, or reporting investigation of misconduct by a peace officer? If it does, you have jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And the commission can certainly limit it if it wishes to.
Madam Chair, I would, I would agree with Commissioner Brazil. And I think, again, it goes back to my remarks that you kind of, you stick with what we've been given in the legisla, in, in the legislation. And I think Commissioner Brazil's points are right on the money.
A situation where two, two officers go out for a beer later that day, and they're both off-duty. And one officer disposes something that they did. And the other officer does or doesn't report it. Well, they're both off-duty, but he's hearing about it, or she's hearing about it then. And therefore, we do think it's an act of dishonesty that they wouldn't report it even though they were off-duty. That's where I have trouble making that distinction. Let me go back to you, Jackie. When you were talking about on and off-duty, do you think it's specifically to dishonesty or to other ones?
Well, I think that is a consideration that came up through the different work groups in all nine elements for this board to consider, this commission to consider. So I would just keep that as an open-ended discussion point for you as you work your way through each of these nine.
My sense is that we've heard enough about this particular issue as it relates to dishonesty. And even though we all feel this, it should be an on-duty. As soon as we hear these stories about off-duty, tampering with evidence, any of the other issues, because they're rather specific here, then it gets a little murky. So does anybody want me to add on-duty to the statement? Okay, great. Any other concerns, Jackie, as to dishonesty?
No, I think that that was the biggest sticking point between the two work groups. Thank you.
Rhea, anything? Okay, back to the commissioners. Anything else in the paragraph on dishonesty? Okay, we've reached an hour, and we have this fabulous court reporter there. And we're going to give her a break. So we're back at this at 10:15, please. Thank you. Okay, everyone, if I could get you to take your seats and continue with the next one, which is abuse of power. And that is on both page two and page three. So if you could start off by reading it to yourself, both the definition of abuse of power as well as the workshop A and workshop B recommendations. I'm waiting to see everyone look up when you're ready. Okay, I'll start for, just to starting off. I would probably want to add the word knowingly in front of intimidating witnesses because it's conspicuous in my mind that knowingly is in front of everything else, but not that. I know that each of us have experienced times where we have intimidated somebody, and we didn't realize we intimidated them. So I think it has to be a knowing, which is a pretty low level in law. It has to be an awareness of. Anybody think that we shouldn't add the word knowingly in front of there? Am I intimidating you?
No, just to speak for, I expect everybody, I agree, because just a uniform in and of itself can be intimidating.
Exactly. Yeah. And we never know what psychological experiences that people have had with whatever it is we're saying or doing. So it does. The other piece that I thought about when I was reading this was workshop B spent a fair amount of time on the abuse of public office. They talk about that in B, C, and D. And as I went back to the definition of abuse of power, I looked at intimidating witnesses, obtaining false confessions, and knowingly making false arrests. But what they referred to in B, C, and D was abusing the public office, your public office, both your powers and abilities. Because there are some things as law enforcement officers, we have some abilities to do, and there's some powers that we have. And so putting in a term about public office, powers, and abilities seemed important to me, and certainly it's in deference to workshop B, but it also feels right. Thoughts about any of those things? Toby?
Yes, I agree completely with that. And the reason is that, again, I was explaining this during the break. If the commission takes action to revoke the certification of an officer, ultimately, that decision can be reviewed by a court of law. And the court of law is going to look at it to see a couple of things. First, the question is, did the conduct demonstrate unfitness or lack of confidence to serve as a peace officer? And then the other issue sort of gets into this question of on-duty versus off-duty. It's the nexus question, right? Is there a, next, is there a connection between the conduct and the job sufficient that it comports with due process and the law for the commission to take action to remove somebody's ability to practice the profession? So when I look at, why did the legis- So when I look at, why did the legislature put abuse of power into this definition? Well, it's a peace officer. And so I think that the power, they're not talking about the power as, you know, in a household dynamic, right? They're talking about the power of a peace officer. And the individual is abusing the power or authority that they have by virtue of their public office. So I think that is in some ways implied by a necessary implication. But it makes perfect sense to me that we would want to add that in.
Okay, so.
I have a question for Toby. Toby, one and the chairperson. It's a legal question. If they illegally access databases, need to know, right to know, or they solicit somebody to do that, doesn't that fall under acts that violate the law? And why would we add that if it falls under acts that violate the law?
Because they can legally access it because of their public office. It has, it's the intent of why they're doing it. And the intent in this case is for their own private whatever. So they're abusing their powers as a public officer.
But if they, it's illegal if they do it for their private reasons. Correct. That's already a violation of the law. So again, I just feel it falls under acts that violate the law.
And it may very well be, if you don't mind, it may very well be that we have a fact pattern that might fall, you know, into one or the other, or maybe you could even prosecute it under one or the other grounds. But the question is, we do need to have an understanding of how the commission views what an abuse of power is for purposes of this definition, right? So when a given fact pattern comes to the, the, the board or to the commission, then we need to have some understanding as we look at that fact pattern. Okay, first question, is it an abuse of power? And then the next question, maybe it's not. And then maybe we go to the question of violating a law. So, so again, I think it's a useful exercise for us just to, for the commission to express to staff sort of how it sees what an abuse of power is. Because we will need to know what, what it is when we look at a given fact pattern and see, does it fit under number two, abuse of power or not?
Good question. Yes, Commissioner Brazil.
I have a legal question again. I'm going to comment one. I like the change you made first. When it says, but not limited to, because the language has, these are examples, but not limited to.
Correct.
Would fact patterns that are not violations of law, but not, not listing a specific example here, we could still bring that forward. In other words, using surveillance stuff, we don't need to identify it. We can look at it because you've got others in here.
Yes, Commissioner, that's absolutely correct. And, you know, again, I, I think it does make sense that we could tie the abuse of power to, to the abuse of the office, right? And so the example that you gave would be an abuse of the office, therefore it would be an abuse of power. And it would be actionable, even if it didn't arise to a violation of a statute. Because that, that isn't a requirement in abuse of power independently. Because again, this is just a question of, okay, we got to look at a fact pattern and look at number two, does it fit or not? And so under that circumstance, yes, absolutely, that would be, that would be actionable.
Because I strongly share Commissioner Donlin's view that the tighter we stick with the legislation language and the intent, the better off we are for you legally and everything else legally. The only thing I would add on this for consideration, and maybe it does apply with the but not limited to is it's knowingly obtaining a false confession. I honestly think it should be statement. Because confession implies it's a suspect versus just anybody. But that, that would be the only thing, and I don't know if it qualifies with the but not limited to, but that's the only thing I saw maybe in the language the legislature didn't distinguish between the two.
Thank you. Other comments? So we have three changes that we're suggesting here. So the first would be, before you type it, let me just say that loud to everybody because I think there is a little bit of disagreement. So let's be and we can, even if just the majority of us feel one way, it's okay to put it up there because ultimately it'll come back to all of us and may for a vote. So the changes would be as follows, if we wanted to make all of them. Abuse of power, comma, including but not limited to, comma, adding the word knowingly, so it's consistent with everything else. So the word knowingly would go in front of intimidating witnesses. Then knowingly obtaining a false confession and knowingly, and what were you, Rick, I'm sorry. You didn't want to change the word obtaining.
It'd just be statement because confession to me is just with a suspect, but statement includes everybody.
I understand that. Knowingly obtaining a false statement and knowingly, and take out the word and, so it would be, again, just to confuse us all, knowingly obtaining a false statement, comma, knowingly making a false arrest, comma, and knowingly abusing the powers and abilities of their public office. I believe that Commissioner Brazil's thought was, we really don't need that latter one. I still feel like when something is entitled abuse of power, that we really should put that in, even though, as Commissioner Defto said, doesn't that already comport? Or as Commissioner Brazil said, it falls under the idea, but not limited to. I just think it tightens it up a little bit. It makes it a little easier for people who are looking at abuse of power to also consider, and don't abuse your power. Madam Chair.
Regulatory perspective, I think what I would say is that we might want to, if we're going to do that, I think we might want to say abuse of power is a, whatever the wording is, a violation of the public office. So we're making clear that's what abuse of power is. And then you can say, have examples, including but not limited to. And then, and we can add, we can certainly add false statement, although it's probably already there within the including but not limited.
So Toby, your words would be abusive power. Give it to me again. Is.
Well, and, and I'm sorry, you would say you had.
Oh, I had knowingly abusing the powers and abilities of their public office.
Right. So it would be abusive power is a, and then we would have that language.
Knowing the abusing the powers and authorities of your, your, their public office.
Right.
And then go on to.
Comma, including but not limited to.
So that's another thought. Commissioner Donlin, did you have some thoughts?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd go back to my remarks about sticking with the, the language. And I think that your, your point is right on the money, but I think it's already included with the words not limited to. But I would be comfortable with adding knowingly. And I totally would understand Commissioner Brazil's comment about statement. I, I think it's absolutely applicable.
But more importantly, do you like my dress?
Having gone through the.
Levitt, you want to make comment about your dress?
Yes, it's beautiful. Thank you.
Yes, you have another comment?
I do. We can add to but not take away as just a reminder. So
Oh, that's right, we can't.
Take away confession, we can add to that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner O'Rourke, anything about adding what we've discussed?
No, I, I think we need to limit it to what the legislature is saying and the, the recommendation, the but not limited to, I think covers the last, what you were suggesting. I do like the knowingly and then the false statement or confession.
Okay, do that because we can't change the word confession. Okay, anybody else want to comment on whether we want to add that? I think we've all agreed to knowingly. Now do we want to add the provision at the end of knowingly, either in the beginning, abuse of power is knowingly abusing the powers and abilities of, of public office? Or not? Commissioner Braun?
I say yes, and to make it clearer to line level law enforcement, because temptation is great, especially for let's violations to just, just run somebody or just find that piece of information and everybody knows that it's wrong. But to make that clearer in serious misconduct, that there are, there is the very serious ramification of losing your post certificate. And I, I was on board with Commissioner Nieto initially that that would be covered under other violations of law, but it is an abuse of power. So I don't think that it would be wrong to add that here.
Anybody else have any comments, other comments on that? Okay, I would suggest then we put it in the notes as Toby suggested it. And again, this staff will have an opportunity to actually write it up and take a better look at it, and then we'll have a chance to vote. So we'd be adding the words in the whiteboard. Abuse of power is knowingly abusing the powers and abilities of public office.
Is it powers and authority of public?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Powers and authority of public, and is it of their public office, of public office in general? How would you deal with that?
I might actually leave it public office.
Okay. Okay. I'll say it again slowly now. Abuse of power is knowingly abusing the powers and authority of public office.
Comma, including but not limited to.
And then comma, and then we go back to every, the language that's there, including but not limited to, comma. And then we add the word knowingly before intimidating witnesses.
And then if I can make a suggestion, I think we could add Commissioner Brazil's very easily by simply saying knowingly obtaining a false statement or confession.
Nice, nice.
I have a statement to make.
Knowingly, okay, that's good. False confession or statement. And then, true statement, comma, and knowingly making a false arrest, which is already there.
Toby?
Yeah.
Does it matter if Government Code Section 5324 3.3 says his or her office? Or position is called out that way in that Government Code section?
Problem is, if anytime we do his or her, we really should do his, her, or they. And so then we're going to be putting in a lot of pronouns.
I understand that. I'm just, I didn't know if that was something that had to match up to the Government Code.
I actually think we're okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
But this is great. And I really would love, I love the idea that staff and commissioners are jumping in because we can't go back. It's too complicated. So any thoughts you have about this? Really now's the best time. Hearing nothing, we will move on to three. Okay, so three is on page three and page four, I believe. Yes. So if you could take some time to read about physical abuse. Okay, this is pretty meaty in terms of workshop As and Bs comments. Let me start with just a series of questions perhaps as related to them. There was a discussion that it should only be physical abuse included, but not limited to the excessive or unreasonable use of force that results in serious bodily injury. Does anyone feel they want to add that provision, serious bodily injury? Okay, hearing nothing, we will move on. There was another discussion of the word intentional. So in that case, it would be physical abuse, including but not limited to intentionally using excessive or unreasonable use of force. Anyone think we should add the word intentional there? Okay. Didn't hear anybody responding to that. I guess I want to comment on that one. I could see how someone would be trying to arrest someone and they would be trying to put their hand down and he would hit, they would hit the person in the head with their watch. You know, certainly didn't intent hit them with a watch, trying to get their arm behind them. Do we want to, so if it, right now, the way it's reading is that they're using excessive or unreasonable use of force. My suggestion is that there was no intent to use excessive or reasonable force in the fray of the moment the watch hit the head and that caused the injury. Thoughts? Say it again. You think the word intentional should be added? Okay. Yes. Commissioner?
Some of it's not intentional. I mean, most of us who've been in fights over the years in, on duty, you know, wrestling with drunks, et cetera. The injuries can occur with, that aren't, that aren't intentional.
Yes.
So I think.
That's why I brought it up twice because I wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page because I was very concerned about that.
I like workshop A's comments. I think intentional is correct.
Okay. Any, anybody not comfortable putting in the word intentional?
If I can ask, please. Is that a limitation only on excessive or unreasonable use of force? Or is that a general limitation on physical abuse? Because the reason that I ask is that workshop B included some aspect of the idea of a failure to intercede.
I want to talk about that separately.
Medical care.
I definitely want to talk about that separately, but I think your question is similar to the question you raised with two. We could, which is after the words physical abuse, we could put the word intentional versus where I put it. So it'd be intentional, excuse me, physical abuse is intentional, is an intentional act, including but not limited to the excessive, so, and then if your definition of physical abuse, intentional act. The beginning or what were you thinking?
Yes, you could absolutely do that. Again, with the decision that the commission needs to make is how does it want to limit it? Does it want to include acts which might include a denial of medical care, a failure to provide medical care, a failure to intercede? That may or may not be inconsistent with intentional language. We'd have to think about it.
But wouldn't that be consistent if someone, if someone would have to intentionally have denied them intentionally? So I think we're still okay there. So the only suggestion we have so far is physical abuse, comma, and intentional act. So it would just be the words and intentional act.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Just being a contrarian here.
And can you make, make sure your mic's on?
Yes, I, does, does that then imply that my argument, that everything that I did to abuse someone was not intentional? And how do I, how do you prove that it was not intended?
Describe the scenarios that we're all on the same page.
You body slammed someone and you say, but I wasn't intending to hurt them, but I was trying to control them.
Intentional only means that you intended to slam them in, in law. So an intentional act is an act you intended to do. The repercussions of that act are irrelevant. So when you said, you started off the sentence with, I head slammed them. Is that what you said?
Yeah, I just.
Whatever, head slam, that was an intentional act. You did not intend to injure them. I don't care what you intended to injure them, but you intended to slam them in the head. That's how the word intentional is used. You want to give it a crack?
No, I agree with that. That, that's 100% correct. Intention just means that it was volitional. You intended the act that you engaged in. I think really the question is, what is abuse, right? Because a peace officer may intentionally take someone to the ground and, and yet that's completely a reasonable and appropriate use of force under the circumstance. So I think the question certainly intentional is an, an, an element of it. But I think more fundamentally, the question is, what is the commission going to view as, as abuse?
But doesn't that then get answered in the second part of that sentence, which is excessive or unreasonable use of force?
Well, well, yes, insofar as that, but that's only one example. So, so really the question is, what is physical abuse? And we kind of need to define what that is. Now, I suppose we could just say, we could just leave it the way it is. And then it's just a question under the, under any given fact pattern if the commission believes that that would be physical abuse. But, but the idea would be, can we expand a little bit more on what we envision physical abuse to be? With the understanding that excessive or unreasonable use of force is an example, but it's not necessarily the only example. Because the legislature has told us it's not the only example.
Going back to you, Commissioner Yu, what are your thoughts having heard this discussion?
And I, I'm just a little concerned of having to improve, having to prove the intention or defining the abuse. I mean, I, I'll give a very wild example. You know, with the George, George Floyd case. Standing on the neck, you can argue that wasn't my intent to kill him. It was to control him. And so how do you start to parse those types of?
I always go back to the first act. So if someone's putting handcuffs on somebody and it turns out that because of their veins or arteries, the, that their act of putting it on was an extraordinary situation where some terrible things happened. That isn't an intention to cut off their blood in their wrist. The intention, but where the intention comes in is they click it twice, so it hurts. So I don't care about, the damage that follows is the damage that follows. But the intention was putting on the cuff and then clicking it twice. So we always have to go back to the first act. Driving under the influence is just. Driving under the influence is just an intent to drink and then drive. After that, you violated the law. So I keep, so for me, intentional is intent to act, but keep talking to me. I'm sure we're communicating.
No, I, I, I understand your point. I just have trepidations about the whole issue of trying to determine what that intent was. And I mean, for me, a lot of these things, and I'll actually align myself with Commissioner Donnell in this case. A lot of this is, I mean, when you go through the different levels of review and it comes to this commission, I mean, they can push it back and ask the questions or ask for clarification on things. But if we're tightening this so tight, then it makes it almost impossible to catch those who become very clever, and they will over time, to try and obfuscate the intent of, of this language or this bill. And so I just worry about trying to tighten it a little too much.
And I think that is the balancing act we'll be doing all day today because we want to give the people in the field as well as the commissioners enough specificity so that they know what they're doing violates the law, but not so much that it restricts anybody else's opinion about, ultimately about their act. But I think putting in some words is good and too many is bad, which is why this conversation's so important.
And if I may, I think it's important, your point's an important one because we can't tighten it so much that we are subtracting from what the legislature already gave post the authority to do. So for example, as we were talking about on duty, off duty, if we added a regulatory provision which arguably took away power that the legislature gave us, we can't do that, right? So we are stuck with what, with what the legislature gave us. So, so I agree completely. We can't tighten it so much that we are restricting or removing what the legislature has already told us is serious misconduct, as it has.
Commissioner Gordon.
Your mic? I'd like to take that statement that Toby just made one step further because, you know, you have Workshop B that added some additional suggestions, but those are actually already legislated items. The duty to intercede, the duty to render medical aid, the, you know, they talk about domestic violence, that would be a violation of number six when it comes to, you know, acts that violate the law. You know, there is a clear legislated standard in terms of use of force now. So I wouldn't want to create language that now contradicts in any way with what that is legislated. Because chances are what is legislated will probably change. I mean, if you even look at the bills that are, you know, going to go through this cycle, that legal definition could get loosened, it could get tightened, things could happen with it, which then means you have to come back to this regulation and make changes to it. So I would, I would actually encourage us on this one to really stick with what is written as it is written because, you know, excessive force and that consideration, you know, if I'm reviewing a use of force where an officer strikes someone, the strike was intentional and it was reasonable. Unfortunately, you know, they had a wristwatch on and they caused physical damage, they caused, caused a laceration with that wristwatch, that force was not excessive. I'm not proving whether that's an intentional act or not an intentional act. That was as a result. That strike was a legally justifiable use of force. And that's the standard that we're looking at in terms of when we review a use of force, which is not only our department standard, is what is legislated for us to look at. So I would hate to add additional wording to this. I would actually encourage us to leave this one as it stands because I think there is a clearly legislated responsibility and when it comes to that, I would hate to start adding different terms of what physical abuse is because although all those things that Workshop B said are valid, like domestic violence and other things, they actually are legislated and covered by other parts of the nine. You know, if someone commits domestic violence, on or off duty, it doesn't matter. I mean, that is the standard for what that means for prosecution already exists. You know, for the inability, the failure to provide medical care, that already exists. That duty to intercede with the new legislation already exists. So I would encourage us to stick with in terms of this particular one, exactly as it reads.
Okay, other thoughts? I'm still of the, of the school of thought that we should add a little bit more because it's not a problem in my mind if we have multiple avenues. One of the things that our communities and all of us are very concerned about is when the image that a law enforcement officer would not intercede or that a law enforcement officer would not seek medical care. So from my perspective, even though I agree with everything everyone's been saying, I'd be a little more comfortable with it if it said, including but not limited to the excessive or unreasonable use of force or the failure to intercede or denial of medical care. But that's just lawyers who love words. More thoughts? Yes, Commissioner Long, then Brazil, then, you know.
I would, you know, in general default to the Donnellan principle and all of this, but I do think it's important to, you know, where we can add something from both Workshop A or Workshop B that does not detract or conflict or cause this damage. I do think that there's value in nodding to both workshops where we can do it. And so I would be.
So, so Commissioner Long, what would you like, if anything, to add to this?
I would agree. I could, I could, I'd be fine. And notwithstanding the Donnellan principle, which I think is overriding, I would think that your, your suggestion does give some credence to the workshops, which I think is also important.
Thank you. Commissioner Brazil?
One, I'd, I'd leave it the way it is. Exactly. I support it. I would leave it the way it is exactly. Have a different question though for Manny and Maria. So when we're done with this and we've got a new group coming on, are we creating training programs or manuals? Because I think some of the stuff goes into the training, meaning when we review cases of physical abuse, we need to take into consideration was it intentional, a lot of intentional is more of the, the application of this. So I think we're trying to do both, but are we putting training curriculum together for the new board that's being formed and/or commissioners on how to manage this stuff?
I'll take it, Maria, unless you'd like to. Yes, the answer is yes, Commissioner Brazil. So Senate Bill two has a requirement that the board members receive 40 hours of training. We are in the process of developing that training curriculum. We anticipate that it will be 24 hours of classroom-based training and 16 hours of training at post, which will include these specific topics in a review of this material. So yes.
Yeah, so that's, I, I would stick with the language and then we, we adjust and do the little nuancing thing and how we handle it and how we, we look at the training piece for the, the board coming on. Because we can what if all the different scenarios? And I totally understand what you're talking about with, you know, I, knee across his neck. There was no intent to use excessive force. I was just trying to keep him on the ground. But in fact, the agency would say that was excessive force. I just don't want to create those dilemmas.
Knee on his neck. That's where the analysis ends for me as an attorney. He chose to put a knee on the neck and keep it there. The fact that he died is not intent, but the fact that he chose to do it was the intent.
Correct. No, I agree with you 100% on the legal aspects of it.
Right.
But he's, he is, the claim is I didn't intend to use excessive force. I was just intending to hold him down. So they were, versus we just say use excessive force regardless of what you, you thought your intent was, we still determine used excessive force. That's why I think we keep it clean with just the language. And then we can have those conversations if it comes to us for review about intent and do they have intent or not have intent and, and go from there. This, this is one of those, I think it's, and I agree with Commissioner Gordon, keep it really tight. I understand that, that we want to kind of give value to the workshops and, and I do, I do read those and I did look at and say, yeah, you came up with all the exact things you should have. They're already in law, so they probably just didn't know it. But they came up with all the things that were appropriate. They just didn't know they were in law or for potentially in law, so.
Okay, Commissioner Diento.
So I agree with the prior comments, the Donnelly Act, I guess we're calling it now. But I, you know, I stated this in our last commission meeting where, when we were all together is that I think there is legislative intent. I know we can clean up the language a little bit, but I, I am a little reserved when we start adding things to it because you have a lot of leniency as, if you're head of an agency when you're looking at these complaints. And intended or not, if it's excessive or unreasonable use of force, you know, that's going to be a sustained complaint with agencies. But I understand the lawyers in you and, and I'm not a lawyer, so, so I just think we should stay as close as we can to what the legislation stated. And that gives the commission, it gives the investigators, it gives the agencies a little bit of leniency for interpretation.
Anything else? Jackie, just something? No. I, again, I'm going back to when we have a topic called physical abuse and then a law enforcement officer sees that and says, yeah, well, I didn't use the physical abuse. You know, I didn't do it. I didn't intervene, but I know later on it's intervened, but there you had physical abuse and nothing about the bystander. And I didn't call the ambulance because I thought that was a sergeant's job. You know, I, I just don't think we can say those two things enough. So I think we have differing views, but let's only articulate the differing views. One is to leave it alone completely. The other is to merely add the word intentional. So that would be physical abuse is an intentional act, including but not limited to. So again, just adding the word intentional. And the third would be including but not limited to the excessive or unreasonable use of force or the failure to intercede or the denial of medical care. So I think the easiest thing to do here is a show of hands. So let me see a show of hands for people that want to make no changes whatsoever. One, one, two. Are you raising, for Rick?
Rick.
Rick's not raising a fee. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 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 six. Okay, who wants to, put your hands down. Who wants to add just the word an intentional act? One. Okay. Who wants to add the other parts about, let's see, interceding and medical care? Just, just me, me, Jeff. Okay, well, obviously then the group in general feels that we should leave it alone. Okay, thank you, everyone. That was a little bit, I'm glad that we're having these discussions. That's what we all care about. All right, so let's see if we can do one more. What's the timing on lunch, Carrie?
Eleven thirty, eleven forty-five.
Perfect, okay. In 12 minutes, it'll be an hour. How are you doing, Kathy? Want to break now in 12? Okay, fine, then let's go on to sexual abuse. And just to remind all of you, that's on page four and continues to page five. Yeah, we need the definition of eight, two, eight thirty-two point seven. I can get it on my phone.
Yeah, I have it.
You have it too?
We should put it up.
Yeah, we should put it up. We putting it up? Whoa. Okay, I'm old. I can't read those little letters. Let's see, how about Carrie? Who has that in front of them? Okay, sorry darling, would you mind reading that out loud? All of it? I think we need all of it.
Well, it's, it's B two, so it's as used in the subdivision Sexual Assault Means. And then as used in the subparagraf, member of the public, it's really those two.
So it's eight thirty-two point seven. Standby.
Do you want me to read B?
Hang on, I, I want to make sure. It says, it does, it says eight three two points, yes, section B and then seven, correct. But I think you also have to read the first paragraph. So A, yeah, okay, you got it. Manny, you doing it?
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, for eight thirty-two point seven, A. Except as provided in subdivision B, personnel records of peace officers and custodial officers and records maintained by a state or local agency pursuant to section eight thirty-two point five, or information obtained from these records are confidential and shall not be disclosed in any criminal or civil proceeding except by discovery pursuant to sections ten forty-three and ten forty-six of the Evidence Code. This section does not apply to investigations or proceedings concerning the conduct of peace officers or custodial officers or an agency or department that employs those officers conducted by a grand jury, a district attorney's office, or the attorney general's office, or the Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training. That is A.
Okay.
Go to B.
So now B, seven.
B seven is what you would like me to read?
Can I scroll, please scroll down so I can see where seven is?
No, it, it is a B seven.
B seven?
It's eight thirty-two point seven, section, subsection B, right. Okay, so it's everything in B.
Well, and if I may.
Please.
Madam Chair, so the Senate Bill two, what it says is sexual assault as described in subdivision B of eight thirty-two point seven.
Right.
So it strikes me that, that really what we need to look at is the description or definition of sexual assault in eight thirty-two point seven B.
So is it B one only?
Yes, I, I think it is B, and actually it starts.
One, two, three.
Three.
Okay.
So it's as used in the subparagraph, that's the one, and then the member of the public. So it's those two, in my view, that is the definition or description of sexual assault in eight thirty-two point seven, which the legislature has pointed us to.
I agree. So do you want to read that out loud, Toby, so we're on the same page?
Sure. As used in the subparagraph, sexual assault means the commission or attempted initiation of a sexual act with a member of the public by means of force, threat, coercion, extortion, offer of leniency, or other official favor, comma, or under the color of authority. For purposes of this subparagraph, the propositioning for or commission of any sexual act while on duty is considered a sexual assault. Subparagraph three, as used in the subparagraph, quote, member of the public, end quote, means any person not employed by the officer's employing agency and includes any participant in a cadet, explorer, or other youth program affiliated with the agency. This is language, by the way, that was all put in by the legislature in Senate Bill fourteen twenty-one, which was the provision that carved out and made these records public.
Okay, so let me ask you, Toby, so that others can hear your answers. Does that include use of sexual act under the color of authority?
As, well, that is specifically included in the first sentence.
Right.
As one of the impermissible acts of sexual assault.
So I heard them all there, but let me just go through it. Overwhelming, power, differential, or dynamic tilts towards an officer must be considered? Do you feel that's being addressed?
I'm sorry, we're on the chart now.
We're on the chart, but we're looking at the language. And one of the things that Workshop B talked about was overwhelming power differential, be it because someone is a vulnerable population or not, or dynamic tilts toward an officer must be considered.
Well, looking just at the language of the statute, what I have seen, the limitations that I see, the, the primary limitations is the member, the member of a public, that's the first one. Because the legislative definition talks about the member of the public and it does include someone not employed by the officer's employment agency, a, a, agency such as a cadet explorer or youth program. So that would be a member of the public. It does not include though, a member of the department. So sexual assault by one officer upon another officer would not be included within the definition. Otherwise, the only definition is means of force, threat, coercion, extortion, offer of leniency, or under color of authority, with the exception that as long as it's on duty, that that's considered a sexual assault. So I'm sorry, the question then is.
No, I think, I think that was an important one. That was a very specific one. So we talk about the eight thirty-two point seven talks about member of the public. What if it just? What if it just said anyone? Oh, we can't try, can't take out words. Since we can't take out words, I don't know how we broaden that. I guess it could be, we can't add to the eight two, eight two, we can add to the definition of sexual assault pursuant to serious misconduct. We can't change eight thirty-two point seven.
If I.
You can't take it away.
Would, would that fall under abuse of power then if you had, say, a superior officer, a quid pro quo situation with a subordinate? Could that fall under abuse of power with the, the power differential? So say a captain has a, an officer, say, if you want this position, not that that would ever happen.
But I'm not sure if it always is direct power. Sometimes it's just someone's been a sergeant for a longer amount of time or they're two, they're two equals.
Right.
I mean, I think it's sexual assault.
Legislative intent seems very narrow on this, but they specifically called out this section that I would feel uncomfortable adding to it.
It's just narrow, but clear.
Commissioner Long, I couldn't hear you.
I would say, agree with Sheriff Brown, but also it's narrow, but it's also, to me, very clear. Like it or not, it references one specific penal code section and period, which does not, to me, seem that they're inviting exposition.
We can, as you know, Commissioner Long, add to, after the word sexual assault, colon, we could add anything we want. And then we could say, as further described in subdivision, or as described in subdivision B, in addition to. So we can still mess with a little bit. Is there something that you'd like to add or?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, just at the risk of repeating myself. And my mother, God rest her soul, will be very proud of the fact that my name is now associated with a construct in the new world.
And you're never going to let us forget it.
Yeah, I know, you're never, you're going to hear this forever. It's fabulous. And I, I think this is very straightforward. And Commissioner Brown's point is right, and so is Commissioner Long. Abuse of power are even basically a crime. It's a crime. It's absolutely going to be covered. So I, I think this is, is very straightforward and goes back to my previous comments of sticking with the language.
Does anyone think we should change this at all? And if so, how? Jackie, as we're considering that, and you're in a position, you've been working on this for a long time. Is, is this detailed enough for you? Do, Maria, if you were out in the field, do you think it's detailed enough for the field? I'm interested in both your thoughts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could just represent what we heard from both work groups in the, as we did these different hearings, that I think the common denominator was is that the definitions needed to be specific enough so that the agencies and the officers knew what conduct could be decertifying. And so that was the common theme that we heard throughout. And I would just suggest that you keep that in mind as we go through here regarding specificity. So, thank you.
And Jackie, in terms of sexual assault four, would you say it is, it does meet that, or it does not, based on what you heard from the field?
That is why you guys are the commission.
Say it again? Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry, I can't give my opinion on that. Yeah.
I'm not pushing you, it's just that we don't have the experience you've had.
Understood.
We want to make sure that we're, we are the recipients of your experience. We'll still make our own decisions, trust me.
I will.
We want to include it.
I can certainly say to this body that the content that we put on this side by side clearly represents what we learned from the two work groups specific to the sexual assault definition of sexual assault.
Maria, any thoughts on this?
No, I, I. Again, I think it's clear to define what sexual assault is.
Is there anything you would add to the sexual assault, colon? That clears up, adds to anything that's written in the body of eight two seven?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Okay, so where we are now is that we're not touching this one. Okay. Let's see. Kathy, I'm going to ask you again, now is an hour. If we went to lunch, it's eleven thirty. Keep going, okay? So number five is demonstrating bias. Please take a moment to read that, as well as, on page five, as well, continue it into page six. Okay. Okay, turns out, excuse me, everyone, that the pizza will be here twelve, not eleven thirty. So I'm going to suggest a five-minute break now, and we'll come back at eleven fifteen, and then we'll go into twelve. Thank you. Okay, then let's take that five-minute break and go back to that issue. Would all of you spend the next five minutes considering whether you wanted to broaden that to include anyone or just members, or just members of the public? Thank you.
And he likes your dress.
Okay, just for the moment, going back to provision four, sexual assault. If we were to broaden that, my suggestion would be as described in subdivision B of section eight three two point seven, that it would be something like with the addition of or not limited to, and again, it would be attacking this premise of members of the public. Does anyone want to do that? And if so, we can work on the language? Or should we just leave it alone? Raise your hand if you want to do that.
Hey, I have a suggestion.
Please.
I think if you did that.
Mission Buell.
And then just added language to also include members of the employing agency.
To also.
To also include members of the employing agency.
My concern with that is that is still limiting because people are going to find an exception to that. Well, what if they're not an employee, but they're a volunteer? So I think if we say to anyone?
Or you put, well, just put members of the employing agency. They're members, if you're a volunteer, you're a member. That's what, I'm just saying if you, because that's the carve-out.
Yeah.
It, it's any person not employed by the employees, officers, employing agency. Everyone else is included, so if we just include the ones that are excluded, I think you're, I think we're clean.
Right, the, the definition in eight thirty-two point seven only applies to a member of the public, which is any person not employed by the officer's employing agency. And so you're absolutely correct. We could add, including individuals not employed by the officer's employing agency and individuals employed by the officer's employing agency. And that way it would include those, those individuals. That makes sense, if that's what the commission wants.
So Commissioner Buell, you want?
I'm just wanting to clarify, does that, I mean, from a legal standpoint, does that include volunteers using employed by? I mean, it's.
Yeah. So, so, so currently, the law says that it, that member of the public includes any participant in a cadet, explorer, or other youth program affiliated with the agency. So if a volunteer was someone that was a member of the public or a person not employed by the officer's employing agency, I think it clearly would be a volunteer that would be covered under the statute. That's, that's my view.
Let me think about it.
The.
Yeah.
The defining language for me would include employee, because I, again, never having read that section, I was a little taken aback that we're not talking about officer to officer that could, in fact, engage in that, and then that becomes a loophole. So I'm, I'm good with it.
So we could either be specific and, you know, to address that concern. So would be subdivision B of subsection eight three two point seven, but not limited to members of the agency. Or we could just include everything, but I'd want to make sure that volunteers, any volunteer, because I, what worries me there is they're specific about the volunteers. They're saying, but law enforcement agencies have volunteers in all, in their victim witness program and a number of other areas. And I, I don't, I don't want to be narrow. So what, what's your thinking?
We can certainly work on, if the commission's intent is to be inclusive and to include any sexual assault with it, with the volunteer, with a member of the public, with a member of the employing agency, we can come up with that language.
Okay, so what I would do then, if people are interested, is on the whiteboard, I would put after the word sexual assault in parentheses, not limited to, what's the term they're using again?
Members of the public.
Right, not limited to members of the public. That gives staff an opportunity to see how best to phrase that and put that in the. But I still want to make sure that, is there anyone that objects to our making an attempt at broadening that definition?
I don't object to it because I agree that that's necessary. It's just in that eight thirty-two point seven B two, it does say, for purposes of this subparagraph, the propositioning for or commission of any sexual act while on duty is considered a sexual assault. So if we get too narrow, you have two officers that are peers. One asks the other one out, hits on them, whatever, or you have a consensual act that occurs between two peers while on duty, which is certainly out of policy and disciplinary, but does that require them being fired and losing their post certificate? I just feel we might get a little too narrow on that.
Well, an assault does not, in my mind, never includes asking somebody out on a date. I mean, that's a power, that's an abuse of power. So what are you thinking?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, but I'm just saying that the actual language here says propositioning for or commission of any sexual act while on duty.
Correct, this is, you know, those of us who've had to do the Senate Bill fourteen twenty-one work have been flummoxed by some of this language for, for a while. And you're right, one of the hypotheticals that's thrown about with respect to this definition is, you know, you have some agencies where officers work, you know, remotely, like out of their home or whatever, or even not, even if you have an officer during an eight or 10-hour shift, goes home and has, on a lunch break, goes home and has a sexual relationship with his or her wife or spouse or significant other. Would that technically fall within the definition of the statute? Because it's any sexual act while on duty. And you could say that, that that does fall within the legislative language. But then the question is to whether or not there would ever be, you know, because, let's face it, there's going to be some element of discretion, right? In terms of what an agency does and then what the division here at post thinks needs to, to be moved forward for purposes of decertification. You know, I'd be stunned, frankly, if anybody ever moved forward that, that, that instance where a totally voluntary consensual act by, you know, between spouses or significant others. Now, that may be doing, engaging in that on duty may be a violation of policy, maybe be worthy of discipline, but that might not be something that the division or the, the, the post itself would ultimately decide would be a sexual act that would be worthy of decertification. But yes, those, those possibilities are all raised by this language. You're, you're correct.
Yes, so you.
Just, I, let me express the concern and then if there's a way to.
And I need you to move the mic closer or have you guys turn it up. I want to make sure I hear this.
All right, Kathy. The concern I, I was sharing with my colleagues during the break, actual occurrence were two male officers who were sexually assaulting a female officer, all of the same rank. She did not want to raise the issue because she didn't want to be ostracized and put off into a corner somewhere. And it later came out that this was occurring, and yes, it was a violation of policy for the department, but unfortunately, as it went through the chain, it got killed. And then I found out afterwards, and we ended up terminating all three off, I mean, both the officers for the behavior. I don't want that to be the issue if we're just basing it on eight thirty-two point seven, if it's, if now it's not included. And again, I've not read that section. So I don't know if it's covered or not covered, but it just seems to me to leave it to the issue of the public and then have this going on internally. And unfortunately, and forgive me for any of the chiefs here in particular, sometimes these things are ignored or pushed under the rug. And that, for me, is just not something that's acceptable. So that's, that's the concern.
And I completely agree. I just, the nuance of that language was cops are very literal when it comes to things like this, and they're going to see that and they're going to call it out as being ridiculous or. And I understand we didn't write the language, we're just stuck with it. But so if we add, there's got to be a way to do it, obviously, because it's something that is not tolerated and somebody should lose their post certificate for, if under the color of authority or abuse of power or that circumstance where the victim's afraid of retaliation and being ostracized. That's still an abuse of power, but it should be called out under sexual abuse because that's what it is. Just, I just don't know the right words.
Hmm, yes.
I'm going to go back to Toby making it clear that we can add, but we can't take away language.
Correct.
So my concern is, is that their definition of sexual assault was very clear, even though assault is not typically what we would necessarily define as assault. But they're very clear is the proposition for or commission of any sexual act while on duty is considered sexual assault. If we add the language to include another employee, that's a sexual assault. I completely agree that not appropriate, but is that, is that something you're going to terminate to consenting officers for? So if we add the language of employed by the agency, we can't take this language away. I think we would have to go back, going back to Commissioner Brown's point, is that would be an abuse of power. And absolutely, there is a way to fire and terminate for that offense. I just don't know that, adding that language here, because we can't take away from what their definition is. And it's different than my definition. But the language is the language and we are stuck with it, so to speak.
Yes, Commissioner Buell.
Okay, so hypothetically, it's addressed in the department. And maybe the individual, he or she is terminated for the behavior. Do they then get to move to another department with such behavior or? I mean, how do, how do you stop? I mean, I think the purpose here for decertifying is to weed out inappropriate behavior. And so if they're now still able, because of not being decertified, to move around, how do you, how do you control that?
I think they still could be decertified under the abuse of power. But if they were equal.
I wish that an abuse of power.
Because there is a.
Color of authority.
Yes, there, and there is the differential of that fear that you're going to be ostracized, that, that to me is an abuse of office. It is abuse of your power if you are intimidating another officer, because now you're abusing your place within the department and what you can do within the department to their career. And, and with the other officers. Now, maybe other people would not agree with me. And maybe there's a different way to carve it out, because I do think that they should be decertified. Like, to me, there's no place for that. I'm just concerned, because we have this definition, we can't take away from. You know, is there a different way to, to add that? Because, because they're saying this is what sexual assault is.
I understand your point, and I also foresee circumstances where people will be exactly of the same level, and something like this could happen. And I could agree with Commissioner Buell, we don't want that person then moving to another law enforcement agency because they lost their job. We don't want them to have their certification. Tricky. Any other thoughts?
Yes, exactly. Under the Donaldin Accord, we will leave it alone. I mean, again, I see it as a pretty straightforward question, and that is, do we want to leave it alone, recognizing then that we would not have jurisdiction under, again, under this prong, right? Because as, as we've all pointed out, there may be a particular fact situation where if it's not a sexual assault, perhaps it is an abuse of power, perhaps it is something else. And it may be or it may not be, but the question is, for purposes of this, do we wish to leave the language as the legislature wrote it? Or do we wish to add along the lines of what Commissioner Brazil said, so we're, and Commissioner Yule, that a sexual assault is actionable, and the commission does have jurisdiction to decertify in the event it involves a member of the public, a member of the employing agency, or, and we'll come up with the language, volunteers or, or other individuals. And that, that's really the question.
I think the problem goes back to Commissioner Gordon's. I think the problem goes back to Commissioner Gordon's comment that sexual assault is not described as any of us would perceive it, but rather is a consensual sexual encounter. So once we, if we add that, then we're saying any consensual sexual encounter between two colleagues is, fill in the blank. What do you think about that?
Well, but the, the, the problem is that the language of eight thirty two point seven already says that. I mean, it, it already says for purposes of this sub paragraph, the propositioning for or commission of any sexual act while on duty is considered a sexual assault. And I think, you know, the interesting question is what did the legislature mean in that sentence? And did it literally mean that if you have true consensual acts, sexual acts between consenting individuals on duty? Is that intended to be a sexual assault? And remember, this was, this was written under Senate Bill fourteen twenty one, which was the disclosure, the public records disclosure statute. So the legislature may have had some, a different intent in Senate Bill fourteen twenty one. But having said that, in Senate Bill two, this is the definition they gave us. So a- again, I mean, I think that the other element is I'm less concerned about whether or not this is a regulation that could lead to an individual being decertified for an act that everyone in this room would say should not be subject to decertification. Because that is where the discretion comes in and presumably that's where you would rely on the division. Not to bring that kind of a case forward, the, the board not to approve it and the commission ultimately not, not, not to.
Would we clean it up if we said sexual assault colon, any non-consensual sexual assault, using their term, within members of the organization? So if we then added the word non-consensual.
So you're.
Adding it to that.
Yeah, so the, and there you're talking really about the specific language in the sub paragraph that talks about the commission of any sexual act on duty and that for purposes of that.
Right.
That sentence, we could limit it by regulation to, to refer only to non-consensual.
So non-consensual members. So do you want to fool around with that a little bit and see what? I see the furrowed brow, Commissioner Long.
It's an interesting question because then I'm wondering if we're removing, right? Right, right, that's, that, that.
But if it's including any non-consensual act, sexual act as defined below to members of the organization.
Then we add after, as defined in eight thirty two point seven B two, also to include non-consensual acts within, I don't know, I mean, a different, to add to, you know, keep their definition and then add within amongst employees or quid pro quo, power differential, I don't know.
I think you could do that because right now the agency, that's right. The language excludes employees of the agency. So I think we can include employees of the agency under defined circumstances without getting outside of the scope of the legislation. Because we're adding them in is because right now excludes them and we can include certain things that we define if we want to.
So go.
But I'm looking at the, Toby's going, I don't know, we're kind of, we're kind of walking the line now.
It, it's a fine line because of the way that the legislature decide the, the, the legislature described the commission of any sexual act while on duty. So I think there's a question that, that, that between officers on duty, it may already be covered if it, you know, if it happens on duty by virtue of that, of that latter definition.
Couldn't you say sexual assault colon, including non-consensual acts by members of the organization? So we're not, we're only adding non-consensual acts to members of the organization.
Sure, you could, you, you could include that and I think it's, it's arguably already there, but you could call, you could spell it out.
Let's, let's, again, I'm going to suggest we give this to the staff, but could you put in the notes the non-consensual act, including, so after sexual assault colon, including non-consensual acts of sexual assault as defined by eight thirty two point seven with members of the organization? Hello?
Would that not be rape?
It's any non-consensual sexual assault as defined by eight thirty two point seven. And they define any, any act of sexual contact as sexual assault in eight thirty two point seven.
But wha- what I'm saying is if we're trying to cover the employee to employee issue.
Right.
The non-consensual, non, non-consensual sexual acts is rape.
But, but the, I, I, I think the point getting to Commissioner Long's point, which I, which I, 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 I think is probably right. And that is that, you know, the problem is how do we divine the legislative intent in that sentence? But, you know, as with all lawyers, you look at it and you look at the plain language first. And the plain language says commission of any sexual act while on duty is considered a sexual assault. And so it seems that the legislature has already said, has made the decision that if it occurs on duty, that it falls within the definition, whether it's consensual or not. And so the concern would be by messing with the language, are we removing something? Uh, but, but, you know, but again, really it boils down to the question is the commission's going to have the final say in these cases, right? So if, if it comes to the commission, should someone, someone lose the ability to be a peace officer in California because they had consensual sexual relations on a break with another employee or spouse or whatever? That's where the discretion comes in. But, but I am a little worried about adding language that is arguably subtracting from what the legislature has told us is a mandatory potential subject for disqualification.
Anybody else want to comment on this? Okay, then I think we'll leave it the way it says there. And then I, what I would just put in its on the notes is members of the organization, question mark. So that in case you all in your infinite wisdom can come up with a way to do this, which doesn't fly in the face of the provision and also adds to it, then you can bring that to us and me. Manny, I'm looking at you and your light is green. Did you want to say something?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just hearing the discussion, I have some concerns that we would be able to, one, do that and two, to execute. To me, it seems like the penal code is specific to members of the public. And now we're conflating it and trying to make it work for members of the department. And it seems like that will not work. The proposition statement is mentioned by Commissioner Braun adds some, you know, that adds a lot of complexity to putting the two together. I don't think it's necessary. I would leave it as is and go with the, the Donaldan doctrine. I honestly, that, that's my opinion. I believe it as is. There are other things that hopefully will cover those sexual, inappropriate sexual encounters between department personnel. The other thing that I would say is if we do, if you all do something like this, that it should be very deliberate and it should be, yeah, but that, we don't want to be in a position where some officer reads the plain language of what comes out. And then we say, yeah, but we don't, we don't do that. That's just too, too, we don't bring those to the commission. We don't want to have those instances. So it gives me pause to put those two together because it's very, very clear that eight thirty two point seven is met for members of the public. And now we're, we're trying to put something together that really was never intended to. I don't know what the deliberation was when the bill was going through, but I would hope that this was discussed and that there was some agreement, whoever put it through or in the legislature when they voted on it, to keep it as that. So.
Yeah, I think we're all shocked that sexual assault is being defined the way it is. I'm not sure if this is the mechanism to change that or not. So now, having heard from everybody else, raise your hand if you want anything written in the white box on that, if you just want to leave it alone. Okay, and you, you would like. Okay, okay. Then I think even if we have one person and two people who want the attempt, let's see, maybe you'll come back with something, maybe you'll come back with nothing. But that's why I would put that in parentheses for your consideration.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry if I may, so when we propose the regulation, we could leave, you know, have option A, leave it as is with nothing.
Yes.
And option B, we could try our best to come up with some language to address members of the department. And then an option C is something else, other, we could do that if you would like. So is that doable, Jackie, on our part?
Commissioner Yu, is that okay with you? Yeah, that's okay with me. Thank you. Option A is do nothing. Option B is find some language. And option C is a whole, we don't know about that yet.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you. Let's begin at least the next one, which is demonstrating bias. And if I could ask you to read what's on page five and going into page six. Okay, just again, for discussion purposes, one of the groups suggested in the words actual or perceived. And I happen to think those are important, having worked on the hate crime legislation because someone could raise the issue of, well, that's not their race. Or that's not their origin. Really, it's what's in the mind of the person demonstrating the bias. It's not what the person actually is. So thoughts about adding the words actual or perceived? Toby?
If I may.
Please.
Yeah, one of the things I, I do in my capacity as a lawyer is, is employment EEO type cases. And Madam Chair, you're, you're a hundred percent correct. There are a number of instances where bias claims can be made because I acted differently toward you because I perceived you to be in a particular group. And that is impermissible under the federal and state anti-bias laws. And so the question is, but does the commission also want to, to assert jurisdiction over that? So, you know, I might take action against you because you're disabled or perhaps because I perceived that you were disabled, whether you are or you are not. Or I may take action against you because I perceive that you are of a certain race or ethnic origin when, when you may not be.
Right. So anybody, so an example of that might be that they perceive someone as being, I'm making all this up as I go along. They perceive someone as being Jewish. The fact that the person isn't Jewish is irrelevant. And they've said to their friends, boy, the Nazis had it right, killing all those Jews. So we know the person is anti-Semitic. And then they behave in a certain way. So we have that evidence in front of us. So the question then, for me, I think it's important to add the words actual or perceived because of exactly the kind of circumstances Toby and I have just mentioned.
Madam Chair on that.
Yes.
Doesn't, isn't that covered by demonstrating bias? It does, regardless of what the person's characteristics are, if you demonstrate bias, like the first two words, period, it's covered.
Demonstrating bias on the basis of, but basis of is the, for me, is the actual.
So, but I, I don't think that has to be, i- it's what the person committing the act thinks they see in front of them, not what is actually there from my perspective.
That's why you have to.
Right. I don't want to have to make that argument. I think it's just, you act in that fashion, you fall under this character or fall into this particular realm and you absolutely should face decertification. Why we have to now try and prove a negative, I don't really, I, I'm actually totally supportive. I just don't think we added, I think it's already there. From my, from my view, I think it's already there.
I don't, because I think it's the basis of worries me. Because that means it's on the basis of their race, not the basis of their perceived race. I don't know. Others? Toby?
Yes, I tend to agree with you, Madam Chair, and I understand your point, Commissioner Donaldin a hundred percent. And, and if, if that was the case, then yeah, it's not necessary to necessarily add something into the legislation if it's clearly encompassed within the language. This is an issue where I'm going to have to go back and look, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look. But I believe that the legislature, for example, in other statutes like the FIA and Title VII and so forth, do, do specifically include the perceived language. And so the issue would be if we don't include it, then if a case is brought, then it would be defended on the grounds of you can't take action against me because this person was not actually in that protected class. And therefore you have no reason to decertify my employment. Whereas if the commission made it clear that whether it's included or not, that the commission's a view of an impermissible act that warrants decertification includes acting based on a perception, that if we include that in there, then, then it removes that argument from an officer trying to challenge a decertification action, if that makes sense.
That's a really good point. So the point is that in every legislation, I can think of every hate crimes legislation, the words actual or perceived are in that. So this would stand out as not having that, which is my concern. It's probably under four two two point seven five of the penal code that makes an act, a hate crime act, a felony that was a misdemeanor. So my suggestion would be demonstrating bias on the basis of their actual or perceived colon, race, national origin, et cetera. Is anyone, is anyone concerned about adding that language? Good, so let's take a look at that. So go, if you go up to the, and then we have more, but if we go to demonstrating bias and the first sentence, demonstrating bias on the basis of, now we're going to add the following four words, basis of their actual or perceived. Should there be there or should it be a different word? Based on subjects, actual?
I'm just looking, for example, at a government code, section twelve nine two six and discrimination on the basis of physical disability.
Yeah, I, I actually turned the mic over.
Sorry.
I'll do it slower.
I was just looking at legislative language in another statute and it says includes a perception that the person has any of those characteristics. Or that the person is associated with the person who has or is perceived to have any of those characteristics. So we could work on the language if the intent is just to include perception.
Yeah, and I think it would either be there or it would be the subject. So that we know we're clear, we're talking about the, what was in the mind of the perpetrator versus what the actuality was of the victim. But you guys have never heard me sound like a lawyer as much as you have today.
Um, so Madam Chair and Toby have a question. I know that posts in their schools talk about implicit and explicit biases. And I don't know if it's important here to include language, even though I'm mostly on Donnelly Act on this one. If, if that's going to make a difference in a lot of interpretations as we move forward.
Law has not caught up to the terms implicit bias yet. I think we'd be adding something big time here. Eventually, I think it will. What's your thoughts?
Yeah, I could be wrong because I haven't thought about this and so I'm now speaking as I'm thinking, which is dangerous. But my understanding of, and Jackie and Maria, please correct me if I'm wrong. I think that from post's perspective and the perspective of the state law, the implicit bias question is a question of training. And that we're attempting to train officers to understand that they may be acting on the basis of unconscious bias in addition to conscious bias and to be aware and concerned of that. So it's a training issue. I think the commission though can properly consider whatever it thinks is the kind of demonstrated, actual or perceived bias that's sufficient for decertification. So your point's a good one, but I'm just not sure, without thinking about it, how we could actually add that to the regulatory language or whether we should.
I think the way we could do it would be actual or perceived, implicit or explicit. But I, I do think we're getting into murkier territories with that.
And again, Madam Chair and Toby, I'm not asking to add that language. It really was more just a question because of the training.
I like Toby's analysis that it's a training issue rather than a law. Any other thoughts about that? Okay, let's move into other possibilities in the next eight minutes here. The social media, anyone think that there should be any inclusion of social media? And of course, that's an on and off duty. Yes, please.
I, I wouldn't include it, just like you wouldn't exclude it, the, the language, leave it, leave the language open as it is for any sort of demonstration of bias and whatever fashion. I don't think we need to include specific, unless we were to say including but not limited to. But again, it's probably easier just to not single out different forms of where it could come from.
So where we go with this, in my mind, is someone in their off-duty time has a Facebook page that anyone can go to. And in it, they're saying derogatory things during any of the protected classes. Do we think someone should be decertified as a law enforcement officer because on their personal Facebook page? Yes, you know, I'm going, Commissioner Gordon.
I, I think that regardless of whether I personally think or don't think, there is already a carve out for that because it states.
First Amendment.
Well, it states in violation of law or department policy. We all have social media policies that regulate whether you're on or off duty in terms of your social media. That and that policy has already been vetted, quote unquote, in relation to an officer's rights according to the Constitution and the First Amendment. So I would hate to get more in the weeds than it already is. I think there already is that for that type of, you know, if it's a pattern and egregious behavior, I think we all have department policies that would allow for that. And I think the way this is already written would allow for the decertification if it was that type of behavior.
Okay, any other thoughts on that one? What about just on and off duty bias? So someone in off duty acts in a racist sexist, whatever manner, walking down State Street, you know, whatever it is. Do we, are we going to hold all law enforcement officers to the standard that they can't engage in off-duty bias?
If I may.
Please.
So the, the legislation does already have the references we pointed out to the First Amendment carve out. And not to get too law geeky on it. And to be honest with you, it's been years since I've done a deep dive into this. So I can just give you my sort of general recollection or understanding of that area. And I may get some of it wrong. But the general idea is that there's already a well-established body of law under the United States Constitution, the federal constitution and state law with respect to the First Amendment rights of a public employee. And and the general idea, and hopefully I'm going to say this right, is that when an individual is speaking and that speech involves the employment, involves their public position, then there's no First Amendment carve out that you can regulate that conduct. So the question is, if it's a public employee and the employee is not acting within the, the scope of their duty, it's not within the core function of their duty. So they're speaking as a private citizen. Then the question is, then, then there's kind of a multi-factor or balancing test. If you're acting as a private citizen and you are speaking on something that's a matter of public concern or some, some public thing that's, that's, that's out in the media and that people are talking about, but it's outside of your job duties, then there is a First Amendment defense. But I think that's subject to a balancing test. So kind of the bottom line is there's, there's a lot of law out there already that addresses the question of whether or not you can restrict or punish a public employee for engaging in off-duty speech.
And I know that I've, I've punished some of my employees for investigators for conduct unbecoming. And I think there is an area for conduct unbecoming. So I guess we're not trying to redefine that. But we certainly, this raises it to a level of them being decertified. So does anyone want to add anything about off-duty behavior to this?
I'm going to go back to my original point. I think it's already covered within departmental policy. And wouldn't want to expand anything that's in here because we may actually limit ourselves. Okay, by trying to do, by trying to do good, we may actually limit ourselves with this. I think we all have department policies that are very extensive in this area and that account for all the different laws. Because, you know, the language is here is a violation of law or department policy. And even it goes so far as to say inconsistent with a peace officer's obligation.
Let me bring up one last issue before we break to lunch. How about the duty to report? So we have a whole bunch of demonstrating biases. And so this is now pointing to the person who's engaging in the act. So the demonstrating bias on the basis of da, 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 da. Nowhere in there do we suggest that a fellow law enforcement officer observing this has any duty to report in this provision. We may have that other places, but not here. Does anyone think that's an important thing to add here?
I want to go back to department policy. We all have department policy that spells out what someone is obligated as, what an officer, what conduct they are obligated to report of a fellow officer. And I, I do also think that's part of that training issue we talked about because I just had the pleasure of taking post's new bias training, that is part of that, is part of that training mechanism. But I, I think it also once and goes back to, once again, goes back to department policy. I think as it's written, it does not prevent us from decertifying an officer for failure to report. So that would just be where I go with this is that, that department policy piece, there's actually a lot of quote unquote leniency within that for us as, as a commission to take appropriate action on those type of.
You would say no need to add duty to report?
Because I think it's part of that department policy.
But you do know that some departments don't have policies like that.
I, yeah.
They're not all great.
If most of them do. Added a duty to report, though, that could also put in a precarious position the person who's the victim of it. Say that you're Jewish and someone says something pro-Nazi to you, then you have an obligation to report it. But then you're also ratting out that, it's, it puts you in a, in a spot. So if we added that, I think it, it could get murky.
Madam Chair, also, and I understand where you're coming from because some of these actually duty report, it may not be something that we do certify as a post-commission. However, I just, I'm going to get back to what's the legislative intent? They wrote this. I do believe that, you know, it could change its living document. Legislation may say, okay, we didn't take it to a high enough level. And now we're going to add this category. I, I just think that we should see how this goes because there's a lot here that we're digesting, a lot put on post to get this implemented by next year. So I, I do understand what you're saying, that some of these things aren't included. It would never come to the commission. But I think we should just start with, stay within the Donnelly doctrine.
So Manny, what are your thoughts about duty to report being included?
I think it's a very sticky issue. I think is, was mentioned by Commissioner Braun. I personally would just leave it as is.
Is there anybody that wants to add something about duty to report in this provision? Okay, we're back to the pizza and the Donnelly. So we, in that case, the only thing we have added to this is the actual or perceived.
Madam Chair, if I may add, I think I should have said one, one other thing to.
I think you're speaking too softly.
Okay, I'm sorry. To me, it's also, it's clear that this is, this is targeted towards the individual, not to everybody else. Demonstrating bias is targeted towards that person who makes those comments. And I think we would be expanding it significantly to anybody who witnesses it, hears it. I wouldn't do it, but that's it.
And certainly, when we get to number nine, the failure to intercede is certainly another avenue. We can bring this up again, just for the fun of it. Okay, it is a.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Has there been any contemplation of an audit over the next, I don't know, three, four years out to go back and take a look at what is being missed? So that you can then revisit some of this language to make sure you're capturing those things that have dropped through the cracks?
I've never heard of an audit at all, but I love the idea of it. I think the audit is in due process would be cases coming to court and people arguing that. That's one audit. Another is us hearing about it from the field and us deciding we want to change it. But there's no official audit that I'm aware of. Toby?
No, I'm, I'm not aware of either. I actually had, had thought that sort of as this shakes out. And Jackie and Maria, you and your teams have been working on this much more than I have. But I think that it just strikes me that factually what may happen is we're going to have all of these cases brought in to the division. And then you folks are going to have to be sorting that out. And it just may happen that you run across some cases where you look at it and go, you know what? Everybody's pretty much in agreement that, that's a decertification case. But we can't rope it within one of the nine particular areas. And the question, I guess, for Manny and for staff is, you know, when that happens, you know, how, how does the commission want, you know, that to be periodically raised in terms of whether or not there's reason or grounds for an amendment or an addition or, or some other grounds for decertification?
Another possibility might be to put something on our website, you know, as it relates to too. If people want, want to make some kind of comment, and I'm making this up as I go along too, to make sure that we're in touch with the field on this too. And that's something else we can think about. Are we getting enough information to see what's working, not working, some glaring mistakes in this? So at the formal audit, there isn't one. But informally, we can think about how we want to get information from the field and from the communities.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
On that, I, I actually, that's a very smart idea. I think it has, as an organization, we're going to have to have some introspection moving forward with this to see how this is working. It's just such a large and broad project that I'd say a year in, two years in. And regardless of any other mandate outside, such as an audit, I think us as commissioners would actually seek input from the staff. You know, pros and cons, what do you see? Are there legislative changes? Are there administrative changes that we can, we can work on to improve this process? Even today, you're seeing as, as it, as it shakes out where, how convoluted and complex this is going to be. And I think a constant effort at reevaluating where we're at as an organization and with the implementation of SB two is going to be a necessity moving forward.
I agree. Okay.
Along the lines of what Commissioner Yul brought up, and I don't know how we captured that, which we won't know. Is, is there any thought about how do we find out or audit things that aren't being brought? Things that actually happened in an agency that weren't reported up? Is there going to be an audit process for that? And that's probably more of a legislative fix because I don't, I don't know if there are repercussions for an agency that doesn't report things that ought to be reported.
There certainly are laws about not reporting when it comes to, for instance, if a child has some kind of active alleged child abuse and it goes to a staff member at the school and the school doesn't report. I've prosecuted principals and assistant principals for not making the reports. So we know that there is a legal means to do something like that. That's biting off a way bigger apple than we've been asked to do today. But I think, you know, we should think about agendizing this. Maybe that's the best way to sue it for January 2024. And finding ways that we can have anonymous statements made from people so that if, and start seeing the problems that this exists. Maybe there's a way to do that on our website. I don't know, but I think we should think about it. Yes, Manny?
And just one other point on that, because I think it's very, very valid, is we could look at, one of the things we may be able to look at is what public complaints come in? Because there is a provision for this that allows the public to make complaints directly with post.
Yes.
And that may be in the short term, before there's a lot of data, kind of give us a snapshot of what's coming in. Because I think you'll get a lot better picture of what they're not happy with agencies investigating. When, when individuals start realizing, oh, we have this other avenue and we're not happy with what's being reported. Maybe we'll get a kind of a snapshot. So it might be helpful as those come in ahead of time. Staff thinks about how they can categorize and really keep track of those in terms of the data points and the information, not just in terms of the investigation.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Please.
So I, I think one of the, one of the positive things, the beauty of the way the bill is written, this is not a one and done. This is a, as we were referring to it as a living document, like all of our regulations, you know, that are not related SB two, you see us coming to the commission with tweaks constantly. Just discussing it during one of the breaks, you know, and I made a comment, we're going to be right back here in 18 to 24 months doing exactly the same thing because we're going to find that it's not 100% perfect or things are going to need to change. I think we will be, we'll do our best to capture some of that and make our recommendations. And hopefully you all will have some of that also from members of the public or members of the department. But that's one of the positives is it can be changed, it will be changed, there's no question about it. Obviously, it has to go through a regulatory process, but I suspect very, very confidently that we're going to be right back here at some point in time. The, the second question or the second issue that we've had a lot of internal discussion about enforcement. You know, how do you enforce all of this? Because we know, and we had discussion just yesterday with one of the commissioners, there are going to be departments or there's going to be instances where a box is checked, that it's not the right box, right? So excessive use of force, as we talked about yesterday, there may be something that meets that criteria that's reportable, but they're going to look at it as bad tactics and we're not reporting it to post. How does the commission deal with that? Does the commission deal with that? Does that need to come to the commission? They're, obviously they're in violation of the penal code. But what role do you all play in that? And what, what role do we play? That is a very open discussion. We've had a lot of discussion about that and we've just kind of left it. But it's going to, it will likely happen.
Anything else before pizza? Okay, it's 12:10. Let's take a half hour. And so we'll start again at 20 to 1. And I believe we actually have a special room.
Yeah, we have Training Room D, which we are calling the, the dining, dining hall today. We didn't know who's going to, how many people were going to be here. So we wanted to give you guys a little bit of space so that you can have a lunch away.
Just, just checking in to see, has everyone finished reading number six? Okay, so I found this particularly confusing. Who wants to start on any amendments to number six?
Madam Chair, or maybe Toby can clarify. Workshop B said the entire last sentence incorrectly included and will be, should that be part of our definition? The whether a particular factual legal.
Is your mic on?
Oh, no, it is. I'm just not close enough. Sorry.
Okay, are we back on IT?
Yeah, go ahead. Workshop B suggested that the, the second, the last sentence should not be included about estoppel and is, is that accurate or is that part of our definition?
Okay, I, I will try to lawyer it down, but I could talk to you for an hour about this and I won't.
If I could just add a codicil to the question, maybe Jackie, you were there. The way that's worded, it says it will be, did Workshop B feel that someone had agreed to take that out?
No, no, I.
It will be modified.
I, I can explain.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so in, in looking at SB two when it first came out, this perplexed me because I'm very familiar with the law on collateral estoppel as it would apply to this proceeding. I've used it many times as a civil litigator. And let me just tell you very briefly, very brief legal terms. The idea would be when the commission gets these, these cases, it may very well already be that there has been a legal proceeding where some of these issues have already been heard and determined. So in state practice, for instance, I'll, I'll tell you, we have in state service, if there's an adverse action against an officer, it can go to the state personnel board. The state personnel board can render a decision and there can be factual findings and determinations. So it made perfect sense to me that the legislature would include a provision that gave respect to the collateral estoppel impact in this legislation. I could not for the life of me figure out why it was put in this sub-paragraph because it should be a standalone. I would think that unless the legislature intended collateral estoppel only to apply to this sub-paragraph, that it should be in a separate paragraph. And it just flummoxes me as to why it was there. And I put it on my list of one of the many things to try to see if I could figure out why the legislature did it that way and what impact that should have on how we interpret it as we go forward. The, what we got in the workshop was somebody who had been involved in the groups that were working with the author's office to get the legislation passed. And obviously, you know, I can't rely on this, it's hearsay and all that stuff. But I thought it was, was interesting what, what the, that individual's perspective was that the legislature just, it was basically a, a, I don't know, proofing error, right? That, that it did not belong in this particular subsection, that in effect. that in effect it was intended to be, and this is what made sense to me, really standalone. So so I I don't think that we should consider. I mean, if at some point a court tells us that the collateral estoppel applies to this subdivision only, then that's fine. The court can can say that. But I'm not sure that we have to worry about the collateral estoppel issue. Let us lawyers worry about that. From the standpoint of of the commission, I think the real question is, you know, what does the commission think about the first sentence about acts that violate the law and are sufficiently egregious or repeated? But the extent that the collateral estoppel applies, it would be just as I've described, if there has already been a previous legal determination and that there are, I could give you the legal bases for when collateral estoppel applies and it doesn't. There has to be basically the same parties and the same issues. And there has to be an identity or motive or opportunity to defend in the prior action. So all there have to be all kinds of things that have to be met. And it can be used offensively or defensively. There's all these things lawyers talk about on collateral estoppel. But but all that means is that there may be a prior proceeding that would bind the commission. But but again, I think the collateral estoppel issue is a separate issue. And the real question here is, what does the commission think about the first sentence? Anyway, I don't know if that helped or hurt, but that's that's my view.
That helps me. I'll just ignore the second sentence.
Okay, so let's, I agree with Toby. Let's now consider that first sentence, which is enough in itself to be considered. So acts that violate the law and are sufficiently egregious or repeated to be inconsistent with the peace officer's obligation to uphold the law or respect the rights of members of the public as determined by the commission. Okay, so the things that start coming in there are, how do you define egregious? Do you do you bother to find egregious? Does that include misdemeanors, infractions? What about, you know, domestic violence can be a misdemeanor. Battery can be a misdemeanor, their sexual battery can be a misdemeanor. So there are many serious misdemeanors. So we have some things to talk about. So does anyone, let's start with, does anyone think that we should just leave it alone or add something? Thoughts?
Kind of feels like they want us to add something because it says as determined by the commission.
Say it again.
It feels like they want us to add something or to define it because it says as determined by the commission. So, and I don't know how to define it. What is egregious, what is repeated? And how does it come to us? So if it's a DUI, but it's the officer's 10th DUI, it's coming upon the agency to bring it to us. Because these, these aren't necessarily going to be reported. It's kind of a catchall, but it doesn't, doesn't send the fish our way. We're supposed to catch them, but it doesn't actually stalk the pond, so to speak.
I think we'd all agree that we want to know that it's sufficiently egregious. But how do we, how do we even begin to define that term besides a case by case basis? Manny, some thoughts about this?
I do not, but I do have a question, but I do have a question.
Okay.
Unrelated to that, and I can, I can wait.
No, good.
Does the act have to actually violate the law? In other words, a conviction? If they were, they violated the law, but they they were never charged, clear that they did something, that's a question, I guess, for you, Toby. I don't know if it's what the violation of law.
Yes.
It had to have been a conviction? And if so, I mean, obviously, if it's a felony, it's a simple answer.
No, no, the conviction question is separate. That's a separate ground for decertification, independent of the serious misconduct. So, and I could talk to you for two hours about section 1029, but I won't. So no, that, no, this does not require a conviction. So I think this is in some ways a catchall that is independent of the question of a conviction, where you have an act, which is pretty clear, that violates the law. And presumably, that means a felony or a misdemeanor. I guess there, there's a question, it could be an infraction. It could also be presumably, I suppose, a violation of civil law and sufficiently egregious or repeated. But but then really, the question in terms of as to be inconsistent with the peace officer's obligation to uphold the law and or respect the rights of members of the public as determined by the commission, I kind of see that as not necessarily that the legislature is saying that that we need to, in in much additional detail, flesh it out. But that in in this, as with the other areas of serious misconduct, that ultimately it is the commission that will determine if the act is in fact sufficiently egregious or repeated as to be inconsistent with the officer's obligation, et cetera. So let's say, for example, you have an officer that has five infraction parking tickets on the car. Is that something the commission would determine is sufficiently egregious or repeated as to be inconsistent with the officer's obligation to uphold the law? Or if you have 500 parking tickets, is that something that might be inconsistent with the officer's obligation to uphold the law? So we can certainly talk about whether or not we should flesh it, flesh the regulation out a little bit more. And then I guess really the other question is, with the with the language as it is, is it just, as with all of these, the question of when the facts come to us? It's kind of like Commissioner Dudley said, like it's like pornography, you know, you'll, 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 you'll know it when you see it.
I tend to think that this one is, is, I don't even know how we begin to make this any clearer. I'm open to anything, though. Yes, you wish, Alon?
I'll just throw it. I think this is a good one for the Donald and Doctor. And I, it seems to be it was written as a catchall and designed to be case by case. And that to to make it more specific, but actually, to me, as I read it, we're actually against the intent of it, which was to.
I was.
Here's a catchall for you guys, if you need to put something in here.
We agree.
I think you, I think Toby and I also agree with that. I think it is a catchall. It's when we all as a group see something that we think is particularly egregious and it doesn't quite fit into a category. Anyone want to change this? Okay, then I think we leave this as is. And your question was?
I'm just looking over at Maria and Jackie. Obviously, this is going to be a challenging one for us to execute on because it is so open ended. Jackie?
Yes, thank you, Manny. So I will just represent to this body that this particular one of all of the nine where that was the most discussed and unclear because of the ambiguity based on the language. And I do understand that that's, it was there for an intent like that. However, I think at a very minimum, we should at least attempt to define what egregious is for purposes of not only the field to be able to interpret this, but for us to be able to bring processes and cases forward to this, to this body. So I I would suggest we try to go a little bit further.
You would suggest what?
That we try to expand on this with the definition of egregious at a very minimum, please.
Well, we, if if we want to consider expanding upon it, we can certainly list certain penal code sections. We can say broad things like all felonies. We can say all misdemeanors of domestic violence, blah, 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 blah. So I don't know that English, there are going to be any English words that are going to help us with egregious. All I can think of is, you know, literally penal code sections. Thoughts?
Yeah, you can't start listing sections. One felony is filtered to the top anyway because the firearms issue, so there's domestic violence in those. But if you start doing penal code, you got to do health and safety code, business professions code. You've got every code possible out there. Plus, what if it occurs in another state? You know, they're on vacation, they get arrested in Nevada for something that is serious, but isn't a code in California. I I know that staff would like it defined tighter. I just don't know if we can. I I think it's one of those that's so broad that we just have to support staff when they come back frequently to say, this is what we're running into, issue is running into, how can you help us out, throw us a lifeline?
If if I may, you know, one of the things that lawyers do when you're, when we are attempting to interpret statutes is sometimes we look to plain language and just definitions, commonly understood definitions. I'm just looking at the definition of egregious. And this just came off of, because you know, you get different, different dictionary definitions. Definition of egregious, conspicuously bad.
I guess from the staff perspective, when we start reviewing these things, I would imagine if we get something that comes in, our approach should be to try to link it to one of the other definitions first and not, right? As opposed to using this as the first starting point. And then if there is nothing and it's egregious, which we don't know what it is or what that means, then then we go down this route. But it should not be the starting point for us.
And I I think the the issue with this, and my vision is, if an agency took the time to start an IA process on someone for violating a crime, then we need to look at it, right? Because they've done it. Because what may be, for example, petty theft, we terminated an employee for shoplifting because of the nature and the conduct during the shoplift. One for hit and run, that maybe somebody might not think it was egregious. But within the agency, when you start peeling back the investigation, you realize, no, that was the right, the right decision. I think the concern, long term for me anyway, is what about the agencies that aren't investigating stuff? That should have done an investigation, just ignored it. That that'll be the bigger issue, but it's on every one of these that they didn't initiate a complaint. And that's that data stuff that Commissioner Yule was talking about and the things that the staff's going to come back and say, hey, we're we're getting word that Agency X is not reporting to us. In fact, they just stopped investigating things so they don't have to report to us. I think that's the bigger concern for us. I I think this one will flush itself out. It's just going to be hard and and we just need to be willing to throw the the staff a lifeline every now and again and say, that's all right. We understand and we can help help out with it.
I think egregious is such a difficult word because of the subjectivity of it. You know, and in thinking about the racial profiling curriculum I worked on, you know, we would hear stories about a parent who was driving and they were pulled over and things were said. And it was extremely traumatizing to that child sitting in the backseat. And so then you ask any parent and they would say that was egregious. It affected the child the rest of their life, but it was worse. So I don't know how we can do this.
May I?
Please.
Please, so some of the suggestions we received during the workshops, and just for your consideration, certainly not my opinion, but to give more weight to the seriousness of offense being felony over misdemeanor.
Slow down and speak louder.
Sorry, I do that all the time. So part of the workshop, we received some input from the, from the different groups. Some of the input included evaluating, putting in tools of evaluating the the offense, if you will, to include giving more weight to felony charges versus misdemeanor charges. If there is a rehabilitative factor involved, should that be taken into consideration? Corrective disciplinary actions, can that be used as a factor to consider, if you will? Just throwing that out there as an option for you all, if you want to consider that.
Are you talking process to bring forward to us? Is that what you're looking at? Or process for the agency reporting to you?
Both would be the answer to that, but primarily so that more for staff to evaluate it once we receive this. So is it the commission's opinion or preference that we put more weight on a felony criminal act than a misdemeanor criminal act? Or if somebody has already shown that they are able to have rehabilitative options available to them? Do we use that in determining whether or not that meets this definition and bringing it forward to you as an actionable item?
Okay, Jackie, if if I may, I I had certainly assumed that one of the things that the commission would have in terms of its, the determinations that the commission makes, kind of at the end of the day, on any given fact pattern in terms of whether or not it warrants a suspension or a revocation or no action, would be things like rehabilitative factors and this, this very, you know, all of the, the sort of the multi-factor tests that that commonly tend to be looked at in determining essentially punishment. I I mean, I think to me, what I see in this legislative language is there's the first part of it, which is it's got to violate the law and it's got to be sufficiently egregious, serious, whatever, or repeated enough. But then it also has to be inconsistent with an officer's obligation to uphold the law or respect the rights of members of the public. And then that is what I see as sort of the the key. So I understand your desire to have some some guidance. But but it also strikes me that really what the division's going to be tasked with at the beginning is the question of, okay, you've got some acts. And the question is, are those inconsistent with an officer's obligation to uphold the law or to respect the rights of members of the public? And if so, then it's a question, does it violate the law? Is it sufficiently, what are we, serious, egregious, however you want to say, or repeated? But all of those things that also has to be inconsistent with the officer's obligation to uphold the law. And so I I, you know, I I understand the the point you have, which is that staff doesn't want to just be fully newly making the determination. But it it really is. I mean, I think we were going to look at at further defining things. I don't see it as much necessarily on egregious. I think we could probably figure out what is it, what is egregious? But the question is, what's inconsistent with the officer's obligation to uphold the law or to respect the rights of members of the public?
Commissioner Gordon?
I'd like to offer to look at it a little differently.
Okay.
Versus looking at defining the definition more clearly. How about we look to termination cases? So if a department, and I don't know what the language looks like, I'm just spitballing.
Right.
If a department has terminated an officer for any section that doesn't fall within the others, that should come before the commission for decertification. Because anything that, you know, is egregious would typically be something that they were terminated for. So versus looking at trying to define egregious, you know, if someone is convicted of a felony crime, because there are, you know, and if you look at workshop A, you know, government code does talk about the independent disqualifiers. You know, what disqualifies you, convictions, you know, what prevents you from carrying a, a a weapon, you know? And so I think if we looked at and had agencies submit cases that were termination cases, I think that would make staff's job a little easier because now you're not, you know, you're not looking at all sorts of things that depending on the department, they may think is egregious. You know, going back to, I think it was Rick's comment about, you know, that petty theft that because of all of the different things within the investigation, make it where you're terminating that officer. Well, I think that's a case that we want to see because we want to see that officer more than likely be certified. So I think maybe in versus defining the definition, we figure out a way to work this into what that definition is versus trying to further clarify, you know, what egregious and those type of things are. That's just my suggestion on how we could maybe help staff and help the field as well, because I think that that might satisfy both sides of that.
Commissioner Gordon, I think you're, you're, you're assuming things about other departments that may not necessarily be true. And I think that, having done this work for 32 years, sometimes something isn't a felony. Sometimes something isn't terminable, but I call it egregious. And that's why I think we're going to keep getting banging up against the wall. Because the reason we created the decertification process the way it is, and we didn't, the reason we didn't just rely upon chiefs was because we wanted to make it broader. And I think that gives us the broader. So you're not suggesting, I assume, that we, in terms of this area, we only look at termination?
No, no, I'm just saying that's a base. That's a, that's a baseline as to.
If they were terminated, then then there's a, there's a assumption that it was, it was egregious.
Yeah, I I'm just saying that that's a baseline because I completely agree with you that not every department operates from the same place. I I don't, I'm not disputing that fact whatsoever. I'm just trying to create some sort of baseline that I think for staff and for the field would at least get this, and I think this is the one we talked about, what's going to come back and be redefined in the next 18 to 24 months. This is, this is probably that section that will cause the most, you know, loss of sleep in most conversations. Quite frankly, out of, out of all the sections, I'm just looking at a baseline of how do we capture, you know, and make sure we're getting those most egregious cases. But also, you know, we know that trying to define that word and figuring out what that means is going to be very difficult. So I'm just saying that that would be at least the very minimum to me.
Okay, Toby?
And if I may, Commissioner, you may know this already enough, so forgive me. But there is a very, very clear procedure set up in SB two for the required reporting that agencies are required. very clear procedure set up in SB two for the required reporting that agencies are required due to the commission under thirteen five ten point nine. And so agencies that employ peace officers are required to report within ten days any of the following events, and it includes termination or separation of a peace officer, any complaint charge or allegation of conduct against a peace officer that could render the officer subject to suspension or revocation, any finding by oversight boards, and so forth, that the individual engaged in conduct that could render an officer subject to suspension or revocation, and the civil judgment, just a number of things, but and then also the final disposition of any investigation that determines that a peace officer engaged in conduct that could render the peace officer subject to suspension or revocation of certification by the commission. So so there already does exist a a, I suppose you could say somewhat robust reporting requirement. And then the question is, when the division gets all of these in, then it has to somehow figure out once it gets, because it may very well be that an agency has terminated an officer for a reason that was perfectly acceptable to the agency and was right violation of policy or whatever, but that does not necessarily rise to the level of one of the nine specific issues that the legislature has given the Commission for Decertification. So I do see the reporting a little different, because reporting is is certainly one question, but then we're going to get a whole bunch, and then the question is, when we get it, how does staff figure out, well, okay, here's a fact pattern. Is that inconsistent with the obligation to uphold the law or respect the rights of members of the public?
I think what Officer Gordon was saying is not inconsistent with what you were saying. I think she was saying, if the report is the person was terminated, that is a bright line for staff to say, perhaps this falls under the acts that violate the law. Not the reporting issue.
Yes.
What other thoughts and comments the folks have?
I do have some clarification, because you could have a a termination case that's not even based on the law.
Correct.
So is Commissioner Gordon saying, if there's a, because it says violate the law and blah blah blah. Is it a violation of the law, and she's looking for a termination case?
And then She's saying, but she can speak for herself, is that when we're looking for bright lines, that's a bright line we should consider, not an exclusion of anything else.
Correct.
And then also, I do, you know, looking at felony or misdemeanors, I I agree with the Chair, that there are things that that may have been filed as a felony, they pled down to misdemeanor. But in the eyes of the Commission, they may see that as as egregious, and that's pretty common in our court system. So I don't know if I I agree with adding the definition of felony versus misdemeanor. I I know it's very broad, it's very difficult for the Commission, I I get that. But I can think of misdemeanor cases that people would be shocked that it was a misdemeanor.
I agree, yeah. As an attorney, I wouldn't want to take, make that distinction as a prosecutor. Okay, so where we are is no changes or possibly adding something to egregious along the lines of that something results in termination. So anybody want to add anything here? Okay, then we're not adding anything. Donald, you want to add anything to the not adding anything?
No, ma'am.
All right.
May, may, Madam Chair, if we may, maybe we kind of wordsmith where you would put that termination language in there.
We obviously, we we
You're not going to?
Did not want to perceive as
So that's just a procedural process thing for post-staff? Okay.
One of the things to be considered in the toolbox.
Okay.
Unless someone did, and I didn't think they did. Okay. Law enforcement gang. I wonder what Police Department we're all thinking about now. So somebody decided to put in law enforcement gangs. We don't have any of those in San Barbara, but they do exist. So please take a look at that, as well as the workshop A and B, and you're starting on page seven and moving to page eight. Okay, does anyone want to add to number seven, and if so, what?
I would recommend that we leave it as is. It has way more than enough words.
Anybody disagree? Okay. Leaving seven the way it is. Okay, now on to eight, which only appears on page eight. Okay, this is where I get a little nervous, because we have the police officers' Bill of Rights. And there is no duty to cooperate unless there are all kinds of hoops that we jump through. Toby, your thoughts on this?
Well, the legislation does take that into account, though, because it says, for purposes of the paragraph, the lawful exercise of rights granted under the US or California constitutions or any other law shall not be considered effective to cooperate. So I read that sentence as understanding that there are certain rights, such as the rights under Pobro, and that if an officer is simply exercising those statutory rights, then then that that would not be a failure to cooperate, which would result in decertification.
Can you give me an example, or can anyone give me an example of a failure to cooperate? And here's my my question. So failure to cooperate is so strong that someone should be decertified. And they, and it was, and it wasn't covered by any of these other issues. So one police officer sees another police officer do something, and they refuse to be interviewed about what it is they saw. Now onto Pobro, your thoughts?
Well, okay, I always get in trouble when I think out loud, right?
Okay.
So I'm just trying to think, and and those of of you in law enforcement who have done IAs, I'm thinking, for example, you might have a situation where an officer is subjected to an interrogation. That officer refuses to answer questions and asserts a Fifth Amendment right, and then in that case, they're given the libargar and the other admonitions that they are required to be given. So they'd now asserted their rights, and we can't take action against them for a lawful exercise of rights under the Constitution. But then, once they're given libargar, then they are ordered to then cooperate with the investigation and to answer questions under pain of penalty of insubordination. And if they refuse to answer questions, then they can be subjected to an adverse action by the employer for purposes of insubordination. I think I said that right.
You did.
So I suppose that's that's an instance of a failure to cooperation, where the exercise of rights is not going to be something that we're going to consider and take against the officer, but it may be that the failure to cooperate with the investigation by not not cooperating and giving a statement pursuant to the order of the department after having been given libargar and all those admonitions. Maybe that's something that could be a failure to to cooperate.
That's a great analogy. Other thoughts about this one? Please.
I suspect there's going to be some circumstances where an individual resigns or retires in lieu of an investigation, and the person has not been interviewed. The investigation is just initiating, the person's no longer employed because they retired or resigned. They're no longer the employee of that department, so they can't necessarily be compelled to give a statement, administratively compelled to give a statement. What happens when that individual refuses to cooperate? The department now is mandated to conduct the investigation. So the person's now a private citizen, and I suspect that will happen. I presume that that will potentially be decertifiable based on what I'm reading here. They fail to cooperate. If I read that correctly.
Raise a good issue. Comments?
I do have another, I'm going to throw one more wrench into it, and I guess this is for Toby. Toby, what happens in those instances when the person says, I'm going to invoke my Fifth Amendment rights, and I'm not going to give you a statement, and don't take that as failure to cooperate, but I don't want to incriminate myself.
Right, are you talking about a circumstance where an individual has already resigned?
Yes.
Therefore, is not a member of the department. So under those, and this is something I think actually was raised by the second work group, and it's something we really have to think through, because Pober is set up now in a certain way, and the laws are set up with the understanding that cooperation can be compelled by the employer by virtue of that employment relationship. And if it does happen that Post ends up conducting its own investigations, and I know that's not the intent, but it could certainly happen, then we have to consider sort of how we are able to enforce our rights to, as with an employer, that the employer could say, under penalty of termination, we're ordering you to to answer. So the question I said, I think this is what, remind me, I think this is what that group was 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 getting at, the group B was getting at here, is that the idea was in in that circumstance, maybe that's what Post would consider the failure to cooperate with the with with the investigation. So whereas we're not the employer, and we can't order the person under pain of insubordination, that perhaps the failure to cooperate would put an obligation on that individual, even though they're not employed by that agency anymore, to cooperate with the investigation for Post's purposes. Or or perhaps for the agency purposes. So in that same situation, the agency's doing it. The, when the agency speaks to the individual, then then that individual's failure to cooperate with the law enforcement agency, although it is now not in subordination, because the person is not employed and can't be actually can't be taken against their job, maybe that's the kind of failure to cooperate that could result in a decertification action.
Then what would you do if it was a Fifth Amendment issue? In cases like that, what the prosecuting agency do is they'll give immunity. We we're not in the business of granting immunity.
Correct.
So we're saying to this person, we're going to decertify you unless you tell us what happened. And they say, I don't want to tell you what happened, because that violates my Fifth Amendment right. So that would then be a reason to terminate, according to this.
Yeah.
I don't think so. Okay, see the problem? So thoughts? Does anybody want to add to this at all? Yes?
Just when the wording doesn't protect the guy claiming his Fifth Amendment rights.
Yeah, it absolutely does.
Yeah, so I mean, right, right, so that's kind of neither here nor there, right? That guy's protected as is.
Right, right, absolutely. I think I think the question that Joyce was raising, and that's, and it's appropriate one, is if the individual is no longer, and I may be saying this wrong.
You're saying right. No longer about, right?
Person is no longer employed by the agency.
Right.
And invokes the Fifth Amendment right. And we then say, well, we understand, but we're ordering you to to testify anyway. Do we have the lawful ability to do that under the guise of this? Notwithstanding the 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 question of under the Fifth Amendment, they say, hey, wait a minute, you can't compel me to to cooperate.
And it says here, the United States Constitution, so that's the Fifth Amendment. Definitely silent.
I I'll I'll just share this with you. Most of the people that I actually, I can't think of anybody that this didn't happen in that resigned because of an investigation would have been decertified in one of these other sections. Nobody resigns just because I called in sick. It's because they're at a criminal investigation, and they know that the disposition is termination, so they quickly resign before the case can be completed, but now the cases have to be completed. So we're still going to get a completed internal affairs investigation, and then it's going to be one of these other sections. But I agree, once, once, once they resign from the agency, Pobro doesn't, we can't pull a Pobro card. And they can assert their rights, and I don't, I think we'd fail if we tried to decertify them for lacking or cooperating just on that, but it's going to be one of these other sections.
How would that apply to a recipient witness as compared to the perpetrator? So the recipient witness is being asked to tell what happened. And that recipient witness feels that if they tell what happened, that they're in in fact violating their Fifth Amendment, because they're incriminating themselves.
That's a question for the lawyer when we look at the case. I mean, this is is going to be one of those that Toby's going to be very busy with this stuff, and can they assert their right, can they not assert their right? We're going to get, I think we're getting a lot of the legal stuff. What do you think? What do you think? What do you think? Like the egregious stuff, and is it? What's what's our, where are we at? But I can tell you, I can't think of a single case in my thirty three years at the city that somebody didn't resign because there was some serious discipline going to happen, termination, that would have fit in, it would have fitted to any of any of those other categories, if not multiple.
Jackie, can you, or Maria, can you, either one of you think of anything you think that we might be able to give you in terms of help with this particular paragraph?
No, as a matter of fact, both work groups didn't have much to offer in addition to this as well, so.
Thank you. I do think that we also have the ability to suspend if it got to that point. So we have that also, until this whole thing came to fruition.
Yeah, I think, you know, just to throw it in there, I think the person who didn't want to speak because they felt it violated their Fifth Amendment probably would also be able to fight. Okay, so, anything else on that? All right. Nothing on eight. Moving into nine. Failure to intercede, that would be on page eight and page nine. If you take a few minutes to read that, please. What what's of note with nine is it at the requirement of the present and observing. So this is a failure to intercede when present and observing as distinct or as separate from someone who goes to the bar that night, and two officers are talking about what happened. And what happened was a terrible, horrible thing, but that person, the third person at the bar, couldn't have interceded because they weren't present and observing. So this is a very specific area of of action. So thoughts?
Just a point of clarification. So the way in which I read this, it actually it actually, the witnessing officer that fails to intercede actually is subject to more, potentially more than an officer who used the force because of the way the physical abuse section reads. Would that be correct, Toby, or am I off on on when I read it?
Well, that's certainly something was brought up, the the suggestion that that person would have to have been found to have been remiss in the action of use. But I don't know, there would be more. Toby?
A very good question. I honestly haven't thought about it, so I'd have to probably think about that for a while, but I think your point is 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 quite likely accurate, that the legislature hereby saying that a failure to intercede when an objectively reasonable officer would contend that force was being used, it was beyond that which is necessary may be more than what is required for the officer that is themselves using excessive force that does not rise to the level of abuse, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly.
Yes.
I think that's, that's that's likely an accurate observation, but you know, again, it is what it is. The legislature's given us what they've given us.
I'm asking that to clarify, just so I have a clear understanding of what we're talking about when we're looking whether we need to add to the section.
I don't know, I'm looking back at physical abuse, and it does say including but not limited to the excessive or unreasonable use of force. So when we tie excessive or unreasonable use of force back to this, the language here is force clearly beyond that which is necessary. Lawyers will be arguing about this language for years.
Commissioner Bruss, Brussola was talking about an event at lunch today about hand, a bunch of officers are hands-on, another one just comes on to the scene and tries to assess. Should I help? Should I not help? Should I intercede? How do you know? And I think officers are faced with that a lot, that they just roll on to an event. So in a case where someone who didn't intercede, from their perception, they were present and observing another officer using too much force. But had they come there five minutes earlier and seen that in fact they were taking a knife and a gun away from the guy, that wouldn't have made sense. So I do see your concern. Anybody have any thoughts about that? This is the last one. Now, one way we could mess with a little bit would be in the word clearly. So failure to intercede when present and observing another officer using force, that is clearly beyond. So instead of the word clearly, you could say was adjudicated, was either clearly beyond or was adjudicated to be beyond. In that case, you go back to the concept that that person was found to have violated. So you can think about that.
But adjudicated.
So not, I I use the word adjudicated, but what I meant determined. So somebody, you would throw in a sentence there that it was either clear or somehow the person, it was later determined that the person did, there was an abusive of force.
Well, that that may be the collateral stoppage issue, but I mean, in this case, you know, regardless, that it would have to be as determined by a reasonable officer under the circumstances, take it into account.
Right.
And all of that.
So can you think of any way to phrase it so that the failure to intercede person isn't being decertified, whereas the person who actually used the force keeps their job?
I I think we just have to work with the language that the legislature gave us.
Commissioner Long?
Just a question for Jackie or Maria, when during the work group, the work group meetings was, our group A's under A, was that, was that out there or after here? Were they, were they bothered by this issue? What they were trying to get at with their recommendation, A. Do you recall what their conversation was or what the concern was with the law enforcement work group?
Yes, that's exactly correct.
So then, does that, for my police colleagues here, does, does A get at that to anyone's satisfaction?
I think one of the things that they were thinking about was if I fail to intercede, are my acts of doing so more egregious than the individual who actually is doing the actions themselves? So I might be punished more than the person who actually did that.
They proposed A, I assume, and I'm just asking my law enforcement colleagues whether they think A is sufficiently mitigates that or goes too far.
I I think that speaks to what my concern was and clearly what their concern was.
I I think it's one of those, and I agree with Toby on this one. It's one of those when we review the case here, that's what you start asking those questions. Because even later on, the person may have been found to be excessive force, but the witnessing officer didn't see some of the stuff. It goes back to what we talked about in the beginning part of the day. Yeah, there was excessive force later on determined, but I didn't see that because I was at a different angle. So I hate to put in language that says, oh, by the way, if it's determined to be excessive force, you should have interceded. When in fact, they didn't see it that way. So I think this is one of those, again, take take case by case. And we may find a case where we determine that, yeah, they should have interceded, and the agency didn't hold the employee accountable. We find that the agency was negligent not doing their job, because it was so egregious, we could see it all, and they didn't do anything with it.
I'd also like to point out that under the the third prong, the physical abuse prong, excessive unreasonable use of force is one of the types of physical abuse that's potentially decertifying. But it's also much broader than that. So an officer could be decertified for physical abuse, including but not limited to excessive or unreasonable force. So you could make an argument actually that an officer could be decertified under the physical abuse prong, under a much less of a a physical circumstance than is required for the officer who's being decertified for failure to intercede, because that is only in a circumstance where he's witnessing force that's clearly beyond that which is necessary. So just the language is what it is.
Yeah, but it would be, back to Commissioner Gordon, it'd be a big red flag for me if we're hearing a case and we're we're listening to, they didn't intercede, but the agency didn't find that there was excessive force, nor did we find it. That's, to me, that's like a no-brainer. Okay, there's, then there was no duty to intercede because it wasn't excessive or necessary force. I I, so the bottom line is, I, we just, I'm invoking the Donald doctrine. There's something about doctrine, I gotta find another term. It started with amendment, then that was a doctrine.
So if we have that case, though, and we made the determination, either the board or the commission, that the first officer with the excessive use of force wasn't excessive, then it's not clearly failure to intercede. So you can, you can make the connection when you're adjudicating these things or making your decision.
Here's another circumstance that would be like that. Someone has a cellphone. The cellphone camera catches from the moment police officer B arrives on the scene. So the camera can show you what this person saw. Let's even assume it's the right same angle and everything else. The average reasonable person would look at that video and say, failure to intercede. Later, we could determine what was before the video's camera started. And so would we penalize someone for not intervening based upon what it is they saw? Or would we only do it based upon the end result? And we back to Donald. Because we'll have circumstances like that, too.
Sounds like the chicken or the egg.
Okay, the other thing we can do with nine, as we could do with everything else, is discuss in our last piece of discussing, which is the overarching definition. We can always throw things in there that we didn't really see a good spot for, assuming we even wanted to keep that. Jackie, did you, were you just brushing your hair?
No, I I just had a thought, and I'll just put it out here for your consideration. Keep in mind that all of these definitions, as broad as they are, is gonna lend to interpretation by the, to the agencies. Because it's the agency who will be interpreting this in order to report it to us. So the broader we go, the more interpretation there is. Unless we come, unless we receive information through other means such as a public complaint, we find something in the media. Any other additional way of of obtaining the information, we will be relying solely on agency reporting. So the broader these are, the larger or the more room for interpretation you have, or the agencies have in reporting these to us. So we're gonna have a lot of disparate reporting, likely based on the broadness of these definitions. And I just wanna throw that out there. I'm not advocating one way or the other. Thank you. My hair is brushed. Thanks.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Somebody from the public complains about an event that they saw or experienced. We don't investigate that. We send it to the agency and say, hey, agency, investigate this, and let us know within ten days what your thoughts are.
Correct. The proposed regulations that are out for public comment. If I remember correctly, Jackie, there is a regulation that specifically states that we would forward that information to the agency upon receipt for their action.
So then, the agency, again, doesn't think it's a big deal. They tell us, no, we don't think this is a reason. Now we have a choice again about whether to investigate it further or not. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be correct, assuming that this is coming to us through a a public complaint. Not a complaint that was levied or lodged directly with the employing agency.
Okay, so back.
Yes, Gordon, just a quick follow-up then, just for, I think, staff direction and helping us is so specific to number nine. If we have a duty to intercede case, that should come with more than likely, most of the time, with the excessive force case at the same time. So I think that would be helpful for us when looking at it, is this that we provide that direction to staff that you know, it should be one package that we're hearing both together. You know, unfortunately, they don't always get done together, but that would be, for me, kind of some direction on when it, when it comes this way, would it, how it should be packaged.
So for every case that comes to us with failure to intercede, we'd wanna know what happened to the underlying case. Is that it? Okay. Looks like no changes to nine. Now, let's deal with the elephant in the living room of the overarching. So we'll go to page one. So here we go. We don't have to have any overarching definition of serious misconduct. We can, and that gives us yet another avenue. I think to, just to start the discussion, I'd feel better knowing I had something that said, even if it's not one of the nine. If I still think as a commissioner, I want to explore that, that I would. I'd hate for some, for us not to have that for some case to come up that all of us feel, or most of us feel terrible about. And then they say, because it doesn't fit into one of the nine, we can't consider it. So that's just open, opening for discussion. We can again have no overarching definition. We can have a very simple one. Or we can take pieces of workshop A and B and write one ourselves.
There was a suggestion at the end of the list of nine of a ten of neglect of duty that was brought forth.
What page you on?
On page nine. Neglect of duty that was by either one or both of the work groups.
Hang on.
But not on this sheet, maybe it was on the original. Oh, it's not on here. Interesting. So this is from the first version, Manny, that I had sent back, that I, with the work group. There was a a recommendation to add a tenth definition of neglect of duty. I'm sorry, this was on version, I don't know which version this was, one or two.
Okay, so you, just so we can all get literally on the same page.
I'll read it to you. This was.
Are you on page nine?
It's not on the page nine. It's on an earlier version that I had printed out.
Go ahead.
So ten neglect of duty, this term was, note, this term was added as a result of concerns brought forth by the work groups, which did not fall under one of the existing terms. The conduct is either intentional or a grossly negligent failure to exercise due diligence in the performance of a known official duty. So I don't know if that's something we wanna add or not, but sorry, I was looking at an older version of this.
And I I think the idea behind that was that based on some of the hypotheticals and the information that came from work groups, that you could imagine a situation where, let's say, an officer you know, is in a situation where clearly medical aid should be rendered, and yet fails to do it, and the circumstances are such that you know, it's clear that the, that it was egregious intentional act of allowing somebody to to be harmed. Or I think another example that I heard was officers that are ordered to respond to a scene, and then choose to stay in the car and play video games, or you know, intentionally refusing to go, let's say, back up another officer that they don't like, that kind of thing. Now, it may be that perhaps you could shoehorn that into bias if that was the circumstance, or 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 some other one. But that, those are examples of circumstances where you know, it might be a situation where it's pretty clear that everybody looking at it would say, yeah, that's pretty serious, and we should look at that for decertification. But it did not fit within one of the nine. So I think that's how you can, I'm speaking, because I didn't do this, but I I seem to my understanding is that that's kind of how that tenth, tenth one came up. So I guess the question is, the commission could either do this specific ten, or it should, could come up again with an overarching a broader definition, which allows, you know, circumstances like that to be, to be picked up.
And it's not either or. You can do both.
Right, yeah, of course.
And I agree, there are circumstances, don't fall into this, but like officers that choose to hunt Pokemon, or whatever that one was, that was instead of responding to calls there, or a negligent discharge that was so terrible or caused harm to someone, but wasn't intentional. But maybe that person just shouldn't be a peace officer. There's probably kind of a catch-all that doesn't fall into the other catch-all, that maybe that is a severe neglect of duty or some conduct and becoming, or I don't, I don't know. It's something for us to consider.
So Commissioner Brana, are you saying you would like to have an overarching definition?
I don't know. I just, it could, we could throw it under serious, you know, to include these things, or add a an additional category of neglect of duty or conduct and becoming, or I don't, something to that.
Jackie, did you have something? No, Maria? You're waiting until tomorrow? Okay, Commissioner Long?
Toby, could I ask you, I mean, do you see workshop B's catch-all for mis, serious misconduct? Do you see that as a a vibe?
I'm sorry, the the definition, the the catch-all definition?
Yeah, under serious misconduct, workshop B, do you see that as a, as a workable, credible catch-all that you're, that you've been referring to?
So let me, let me give my thoughts on that. So there there are a number of elements of this that I actually liked. Oh, sorry. All right. Yeah, th- there are a number of elements of this that that I liked. The the one thing, though, that, and you know, I I understand the intention behind some of the language that's in here. The the one thing that, though, that I was thinking, since I've prosecuted these cases, and I I know what it would take to actually put this case on before the commissioner, before an ALJ, is, as a lawyer, I have to look to, how do I prove some of this, right? And so unconstitutional, I probably know what that is. Harmful or neglectful act, that's a little bit more difficult to understand what that means. And then a violation of law, okay, or agency policy, okay. But then things like a failure to uphold community standards. So what community standards are we talking about? That's, that's, that's the question. How do I prove that? And then if we are relating community standards, it may be that a community standard in LA is different than a community standard in Redding. But does the commission want to incorporate community standards in this definition, since it's decertification statewide? Those are the things I think the commission needs to think about. And then ethical and professional standards. That's the only question I have as a lawyer, again, is the question is, how do we prove it? What ethical standards? Are we talking about the peace officer code of ethics? Well, if that's what we're talking about, we should put that up here and make sure that we wanna decertify people and how we would prove that. And then professional standards, I'm not a hundred percent sure I know exactly what that, what what we would mean by that. I I I do like, because ultimately, this last, the last clause really is what the case law says, and the case law says that in order to take away somebody's ability to practice in a profession, you need to be able to show that the underlying conduct is such that it demonstrates a lack of fitness. In some cases, say, fitness or competence to 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 practice in the profession. So I I like that part of it. The the other parts of it, again, it's just just a question of, they're a little bit ambiguous. I'm not sure what they mean. And and I don't wanna be, as a lawyer prosecuting this case, I don't wanna be bound to something. I don't want to be bound to something that I can't, I don't understand what it is, so I can't prove it if I don't understand what it is.
And I think if we limit, if we go with the concept of the overarching definition, we want that to be as broad as possible. Because we don't want people starting to think that a defense would be, that's within the community standards or that's ethical according to blah, 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 or professional. I would take away all those words and just leave it very broad. Yes, Judge.
So if we, if we went with having a definition, would we take what is, I mean, maybe with some a few changes for workshop A, but then add reflects a lack of fitness to serve as a peace officer in the state of California? Because you could say the nine.
Right.
And that gives you that other, that Commissioner Braun was talking about, where they don't necessarily fit into a category, but they have no business being a peace officer in the state of California. So I'm just trying to figure out if versus adding a 10th or going down that road, how do we, how do we take that language and, and put it into the definition to have that?
So much.
So that's just a thought.
So if, if I may, if it's okay.
Please.
So, so my thought on the workshop A was that it in and of itself didn't add really mu- much. In fact, it, it didn't really add anything because it just says, serious misconduct is one of the nine.
Right.
Criteria. And then I would never recommend that we say may prompt or review to determine, because, you know, how, how do I, how do I prove that? So, so instead of having, if we want to go with workshop A, then we just say, serious misconduct is, and then we jump into the nine. That's, that's really what A does, and that's all we would need to do if the commission wants to go that way. If we go into B, I think we can do what you're talking about by having the overarching definition that says it's an act or a mission that, you know, reflects the lack of fitness or competence to serve as a peace officer. And then, and then can say, including a- a- and then you include the nine within it.
But I think you'd say including but not limited to.
Sure. Yeah. And, and the, the, the only question, the only thing we have to, to, and I think we could probably do that, we have to wordsmith the language a little bit, but the only thing you have to be careful of is that you don't want to have a rule or regulation that's so vague that an individual can say, I did not know when I did this act that by engaging in this act, it would be something that could result me in losing my ability to practice as a peace officer in California. I think though, the cases have said, look, you know, let's look at this fact pattern. Any reasonable peace officer or professional would have understand that 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 conduct is going to demonstrate your lack of fitness to serve as a teacher, you know, whatever it might be. So, so it, it might very well be that, that, that we can come up with language along these lines about the lack of fitness and then include the nine and have it in a way that it would withhold, you know, due process scrutiny if somebody were to appeal it. I hope that made sense.
Adam, Chair.
Yes.
Just on that, I, I would actually agree with the former. You just keep it simple. Serious misconduct and it's the nine, and I think to address your concerns and Commissioner Bronz, you look at six and, you know, acts that are inconsistent with a peace officer's obligation to uphold the law or have respect for the rights, members of the public. I think that, as we discussed it when we got to number six, is the catchall.
Okay, other comments? If you, I know that Maria still wants to speak, but I haven't forgotten her.
If we are going to go with a definition like workshop A, serious misconduct is conduct law, should we add the word sustained or proven conduct? And I, it seems redundant that it would have come to us, but. Sue.
Well, we would have to, to, to prove it, obviously, in order for the action to go forward. But the sustained misconduct, that really comes from the Senate Bill 1421 language. And that was the question as to whether or not, you know, it should be made available to the public, and that was only if it was a sustained finding. I'm not sure we want to limit it to sustained findings. I think the whole idea here is that the agency may not sustain it, but we may nevertheless feel that the conduct warrants warrants a decertification or it may be a circumstance where the agency doesn't do an investigation at all, so it's not sustained, right?
So you, you, so that possible broad statement would be any act that, so serious misconduct is any act that reflects a lack of fitness to serve as a peace officer in the state of California, whether on duty or off duty, including but not limited to the following. Feel free to break into applause. Thank you, Commissioner Yu. I'll take a thumbs up, Brad, and applause. Let me read that again while you guys consider it. Any act, and I'm incorporating workshop B's language to this. Any act that reflects a lack of fitness to serve as a peace officer in the state of California, whether on duty or off duty, including but not limited to the following. Now, the problem I see with that statement is, that's pretty vague.
It is.
Is it too vague?
It, it, it probably is, yeah.
Is there anything you can do to that statement to keep it broad but not vague?
I'm sure I'd also just, I'd walk carefully with using fitness as a, as a, as a word, for nomenclature in this realm, you're bringing a different realm in that might be a challenge. Obviously, you're the legal, not me, but it could be misconstrued and by, you know, police officers or chiefs or sheriffs.
Yeah.
I agree, because that could bring in physical fitness, which problematic.
I, I, I completely understand that concern because case officers particularly think fitness means fitness for duty, right? The, the term really comes from a body of law in California involving professional discipline. And what the courts have said is that to ensure, you know, constitutionality of these sorts of disciplinary acts, the, i- it prohibits or it requires license revocation if you can show that the licensees' conduct relates to fitness or competent, competence to practice the profession. So that I think really is where it comes from. It's the, the case is saying, in order for disciplinary action to be upheld, it has to be conduct which you can show reflects a lack of fitness or competence to be, in this case, a peace officer. So I think that's, that's where the language.
You could, if, if you're looking to avoid the fitness, but you still wanted a general statement, it would be any act that reflects a lack of competence to serve as a peace officer. But again, very vague. Commissioner Long, Barcelona, Brazil?
I was just going to say, Toby, I like the, the workshop B. Wordsmith, as you pointed out, to maybe just lose the demonstrating officer's failure to uphold community ethical and professional.
Jeff, you're looking down and some have your trouble to hear you.
I'm sorry. Just, just getting rid of some of the wordage, Toby, that you had a problem with there, specifically the failure to uphold community ethical and professional standards. Can't you work, wouldn't we be able to work with B pretty effectively?
What is it you'd want to have in there? I understand what you want to take out. What do you want to have in there, if anything?
Without regard to whether such conduct would constitute a crime, including unconstitutional, harmful and neglect to the lax misconduct or violation of law and reflects a lack of fitness to serve. That was what I thought would work best, but then I'm somewhat persuaded by Barry's point that a lot of this is already in catchall six.
Okay, let's go to Commissioner Brazil.
Yeah, I, one, I'm in favor of an overarching catchall because there's some provisions in here that wouldn't necessarily be caught. Having worked with another agency where some employees did some things overseas that were legal in that country, but highly illegal here. That isn't caught in here, in this, nor are some of the things that happen in the military where the military refuses to cooperate with investigations, but we become aware of them. So I think we do need a catchall, but it's, and again, the, the language, that's where Toby gets paid the big bucks joking, is to how do we craft it that gives us enough authority to look at something, but isn't so broad that it doesn't mean anything?
Barcelona?
I wanted clarification, what he just said. So you're, were you suggesting that something that occurred in a foreign country that was legal, that, but illegal here, we would go after the officer for it? Would I, would I hear you wrong?
Oh, I think there's some things that yes, we would.
Give me some examples.
Narcotic use, sex with minors. I can go on and on and on, but you hear some of the things that are not crimes in other countries that definitely show that they're not fit to be a peace officer in this.
Human trafficking.
So, but what about, we, we've got people who come over here, immigrate here, and then they become, you know, a, a police, a citizen and a police officer here. And then someone comes along and says, oh, yeah, in Iran or wherever they're from, this person, you know, married someone, you know, 14 or whatever, or something like that, that then we would go back and we would, we would go back in their history there and, and, and remove them?
No, I'm not.
Even though it's a cultural thing there, where I, I think we're opening Pandora's box to some of that stuff.
I, I think there's a big difference when somebody comes, what somebody does after becoming a peace officer and taking the oath of office and understanding the roles and responsibilities is different than what.
So it would be afterward. It would be after then?
Yeah, this is, this is a current employee that goes off and does.
Okay, okay.
I just want that catchall, that if we, we come across that, that they're doing something that definitely would be illegal here, why they're peace officers, then, but there's no crime committed in that country, but it would be if it was committed here. And we need to have the option to look at it. These are going to be rare cases, but I just flashed the, an agent saying I'm working with them. It's like, holy cow.
Well, and, and, and actually in government code 1029, there are some provisions in government code 1029 that do talk about conduct committed outside of California that would have been a violation of California law if committed within the state of.
But it's after their peace officers. Are you, I'm just talking about, we have a lot of people now who come from foreign countries and become citizens. And are we talking about that conduct when they were, when they came from their original country? And, you know, prior to being a peace officer here as well? Or is it just after they become a peace officer?
I think with Toby, what you were talking about with 1029, it's disqualifiers from serving as a peace officer.
Right. Yeah.
So if, if things came to light from prior, after they've become a peace officer, then we would, we would do that. We would be looking into doing an investigation on those things.
Well, we, we would have to, with each of these cases, it gets very complicated under 1029. Manny and I have gone through a number of those circumstances. It gets very complicated. So really, you know, I think what, what I'd have to have is a factual situation, and then I'd have to look at the statute and see if it applied or, or didn't.
Okay. I just have members that are pretty much from all walks of life, you know, from all, all foreign countries, and they've become citizens. And now they're investigators with the state. And this is kind of a, I've never thought about that before. We've really, I haven't had this issue, but sounds like this, we might have this issue now with licensing. So it's, it, it, it's concerning. It'd be nice to know whether it's going to be all encompassing prior and after, or just after you're a peace officer.
Adam, Chair.
It's interesting, just, we could talk about, I'm happy to talk to you about section 1029 separately. It's a very complicated statute, but there are a number of provisions with respect to conduct committed in another state or jurisdiction, which would be a felony or a violation of California law that could potentially be ground.
Okay, so it's all encompassing then? Before, before being a peace officer? Doesn't matter.
Let, let, let me talk to you about it separately.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, I think the rest of us would be interested though, so after this conversation, if you could bring it to our attention. So I think the question that Commissioner Barcelona is asking is, so someone, let's say domestic violence is lawful in another country, and someone's going through a divorce and someone, and they have committed no acts of domestic violence in this country, but in the divorce, the person they're divorcing says, and he used to beat me up all the time in Guatemala. Make it all this up. Then could that be cause? Is that an example? Okay. Okay. I didn't ask it. He did. I just gave you the graphic description.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Yu.
I, I don't want to move too far. I, well, first of all, I agree wholeheartedly with an overarching
You agree wholeheartedly with?
With an overarching definition being added. But I don't want to move too far away from your original language. And it just seems to me, and certainly out of understanding what Mr. Donlin had stated regarding fitness, that there can be some wordsmithing there. But I think that that's the perfect framework, quite frankly, and then just do the wordsmithing. But make that the overarching.
Yeah. I think we're all looking for something that's not too broad. Gives us flexibility in a situation where we all agree the behavior was outrageous, but it's not one of the nine. We can't quite wrap our heads around now, but when we see it, we'll know that that's what it is.
That's the perfect framework to begin and then come back with recommendations, quite.
Okay. Maria now?
Yeah, I have great angst over this conversation. And the reason why is because we're facing some serious time issues when it comes to OAL. We were hoping that we could have you all wordsmith this to try and come back to you with A, B, C, and you pick something we don't even have D, E, or F. That's going to be somewhat problematic for us and for the January 1st deadline is one of my concern is. So I was hoping that this, one of the main things that you guys are going to deal with today is define that and what the commission wants, where the commission wants to go and to give us what you want, and then we could incorporate that into regulation. I'm just concerned about the time restraints. And I don't know if Katie has that information of when that needs to be done, or I don't want to put her on the spot, but it's just, that's a main concern for, for staff.
That's very reasonable, and I think we shouldn't leave here today until we give you that, okay? We're going to do the best we can. So I, I think there's a feeling in general that we want to have an overarching definition. But let's start with that. Who, I'm going to ask for a show of hands about who wants one and who doesn't want one, just so I can know whether we should now spend the rest of this time creating one or not. So who would like to have an overarching definition of serious misconduct?
I'm going to have to break from the Donnelly accord and say I'd like one this time.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven. Once again, it's a magic seven. Okay. So now we're going to try to do what's been asked of us, which is we're going to try to come up with the wording on that. Toby, I'm going to ask you to listen carefully to make sure that whatever we come up with isn't too broad, which makes it completely useless. But at the same time, when all of us have this feeling of, of an act should definitely decertify somebody, but it just didn't happen to fit into those nine, we all say, yes, this is it. Because we don't want to be the people who saw this horrible behavior and said, nah, nothing we can do about it, because it wasn't one of the nine. So. Great? Good time for a break. Okay, we'll start again at 2:15. Put some thought into that one. With that other language that Ingrid was talking about, where did that come from? Ingrid, do you have that language that you read to us out loud? Can I see that again?
Oh, sorry.
That's right.
That was the, the prior version.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if I can come up with anything from that.
I had preached this earlier one, and I was going through it, and there was a find and replace where work groups was. So he's got my notes all over. So I'd let Manny know about it, and some of them revised it. I don't know where that one went.
So that one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so this is a sentence. Toby? This is the sentence that maybe, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff. I didn't see you standing there, Jeff. You're too tiny. The conduct is either intentional or grossly negligent failure to exercise due diligence in the performance of a known official.
Well, yeah, that, that, that's for this particular concept.
Okay, but I'm saying, could that be the sentence we can start with for a definition of serious misconduct? Toby and I worked on this a little bit, and we came up with this, but I'm not going to blame Toby. I'll blame me. I came up with this. So let's take a look at that. I think there are some people who feel strongly, and I'm going to put myself in that category, who feel that we need to have a catchall, for all the reasons you can imagine. And we're trying to find a catchall that can potentially work. So this would be at the very beginning. Serious misconduct, acts or omissions, and we may have to say omissions to act, but act or omissions demonstrating a lack of fitness or competence to serve as a police officer in the state of California. Now, the reason we, even though there is the concern. Now, the reason we, even though there is the concern about fitness, it is a term of art, it's also a term of law, and it's also a term that's used in law enforcement, not for the size of somebody or how healthy they are. It really is a term about whether they can perform their duties. So acts or omissions demonstrating a lack of fitness or competence to serve as a police officer in the state of California, serious misconduct includes, but is not limited to the following. Okay, tear it apart. Okay, hang on, one at a time. What was that?
I was going to say, can you just change ability with fitness?
Toby? Fitness is a term we need to use?
Well, again, the reason that I came down on fitness is because that's the term that's in the case law, that the nexus is that the conduct demonstrates that they are not fit to practice the profession. Ability? I think of ability more aligned with competence almost.
I think of ability as potentially very dangerous, because if someone has a disability, then we say we don't have an ability. So does that mean we're not going to hire people with disabilities?
Right.
Or blame them for their disabilities?
I, I think that really we are, I mean, as, as, as difficult as I understand the term is, we really are looking at the question of, look at these facts, is this person fit to serve as a cop? And that, that's really the question that we're looking at.
And Toby, just to finish up in the legal, should it be acts or omissions to act, or just act or omissions?
Sorry, oh, you're saying should it be acts or omissions to act? I think just acts or omissions is sufficient, I think.
Okay, come on, everybody, it's the last thing we have to talk about today. Commissioner Yule?
There.
So let's go to Commissioner Yule first, and then to Commissioner Braun.
Again, I support the language that's listed there. I think it's important. I mean, I, people argued about too vague, but I think you need that catchall so that you're not just assigning your, your name to something and then having people walk through and say, it didn't meet these nine criteria, therefore I'm free, and, you know, I have no responsibility, and we have no jurisdiction at that point. So I like the vagueness, and I like the language that's there, and I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
I like the language, just as a former police officer who has trouble breaking the habit of saying police officer, it should be peace officer.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree. I was stuttering over that one both times I read it out loud. Other thoughts? How about thoughts from those of you that didn't think we needed a catchall?
Yeah, I go back to what my original, and it's the Donlin doctrine.
Oh, my God, please.
Got that, man, when you do it right, good.
You're going to go home tonight and tell your significant other I have a doctrine named after me, aren't you?
I do, you know, I'm actually going to do that.
I know you are.
As chair, you will hear that.
On the phone, and I will say, no.
Moving forward.
It is now enshrined in post jurisprudence.
It's awesome.
You want to, you don't want it there?
Well, I, I, I have no problem with this.
Okay, oh, okay.
It'll work, it'll work. I mean, my concern about fitness has nothing to do with the framework we're in. I understand the term of art. I accept your explanation. I, I worry about the, the challenge it poses from just a language perspective in, in the profession more than anything else, but in its context, I'm fine.
And do you think we need an overall definition of serious misconduct?
I, my, my original position was that you have it by virtue of the legislation, but this doesn't impact it in, in any way, shape, or form. And, you know, it clarifies it in some way.
Okay, Commissioner Rock, what are you thinking?
Well, just based on the bill and all that, that we're here to, let's see, establish the criteria. I get, we can add to it. I, I get the, the statement there. I think we've done that with these nine categories, and I think there's pretty much a catchall in all those sections. So overall, I don't think we need a statement, but I, I get it, and I see what the room's saying, so.
Okay. And Commissioner Braun, you've expressed your views, and Commissioner Yule, you have, Commissioner Gordon?
I'm very comfortable with this definition.
Commissioner Long? Commissioner Brazil?
I'm good.
Commissioner Nito?
Again, I broke from the court on this one, because I do think that we do need a catchall, because it's surprising what people can do sometimes, and, and there's going to be that one case that may not fit the nine definitions, even though they're fairly broad.
Commissioner Barcelona?
Yeah, I, I think that it was good just the way it was written, but what you've added doesn't change that, so I'm okay with it.
It'll be so interesting for me to see where we are January 24, to see how many more times we had to pull this up.
One last thing. If, what's nice about the Donlin, I figure, what is it, the Donlin document? Yeah, doctrine, is that if this all goes south, we have someone to blame it on.
And years now, people are going, who is this guy Donlin?
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I may, so one of our staff members has pointed out the term fitness, should it be suitability? Or do you want to leave it at fitness?
Suitability?
Madam Chair, I, I can't speak on late, but from my perspective, that would solve the challenge I view in nomenclature used in the profession.
Like suitability?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that the, you know, I think that the courts would ultimately look at the question of whether it demonstrated a lack of fitness, but, I mean, I think suitability, we could probably do that with the understanding that the courts would, would understand that, 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 that we were looking at, at the question of whether or not they were, they were fit. I think fitness and suitability is probably sufficiently similar when we're talking about the legislative intent behind the enactment of the regulation. Yeah.
It's funny, because when I go to this start and you see the whole thing, I think I want to use language that people have used before, because then there's no potential for confusion. But when I heard suitability, I thought, ooh, that could work. And I think if it takes away some of the anxiety, it's, it's saying the same thing to a layperson. Are you pausing, or are you done?
Well, yeah, I, I still do feel that, you know, your suitability, it is, I mean, just as a lawyer, it seems like there is a difference between your suitability for a job and your fitness to serve in that position.
So I, I just want to do, bring up the point, because we've focused on the physical aspect of fitness, but typically, the other portion of this, when we talk about fitness for duty, we're talking about whether they are mentally able to perform the, the job anymore.
Yeah.
And I would hate for this to become part of that. So I understand your point with, you know, the court and all this type of thing, but, you know, in really thinking through using the term fitness, I would be way more comfortable using suitability now that there is another alternative, because as, the more I think through what lack of fitness means, I, if we can, convince Toby in his legal mind that suitability is, is, is okay.
But hearing you say it, I, I became alarmed, and it's, someone could be suitable for a position but not fit. And so I, I interviewed somebody, I think, well, you know, they're suitable, and then they do it for a couple of months ago, they're not fit for this position. So suitable to me isn't a, so I'm back to fitness.
Well, how about this? Can you say fitness, comma, suitability, comma, or competence?
I, I have a question. I think, I think the question's for staff. When, in the hiring process, what's the language we use when we're evaluating brand-new people coming in? Do we call it suitability for law enforcement? What, what, is there any buzzword we use in the background process that sets the stage? Or do we just need to look at it and come back?
That, that term is actually being suggested by somebody who is in that arena that deals with appointments and the backgrounds and all of that. That's the language that you suggested.
Kind of what it was.
Perhaps we can.
I think that way we're consistent.
We can see if, if she's downstairs, and she could, she could articulate the language, Melanie Singley, if she's downstairs.
Because I'm, I'm not the lawyer, but I think if we can loop it back to the, the minimum requirements and all the stuff, I was pulling up language and why we're looking in the Code of Ethics that we had a lot of conversations here at this commission, and I couldn't find any language there that would fit in here. So I was looking for, how do we, how do we tie what we do and other things and qualifications and looking at to here?
Yeah.
Our background individuals in the building, so the PR chief is going down to better.
Will you let her know I'm apologizing publicly now for?
Does that seem lower to you? It seems lower to me. You know, when, when someone's about to go out and blind date with someone, and they say, well, tell me about them, well, they're suitable.
Don't, don't go on the date.
Fits, fits lower.
It is late, but I also think that suitable's kind of a little lower than maybe fit, you know, mentally fit, physically fit, psychologically fit, intellectually fit, all right, bring them on. Suitable, no thanks.
Qualified, unqualified?
Qualified's like suitable. I want to know that they're more than that. Okay, we have the Dudley doctrine of who you go on a blind date with. So what, what is your thinking right now about fit, suitable, ability?
I do have one, I'm just pulling up the psychological evaluation report for somebody to enter into law enforcement. It is suitability declaration to be maintained in the background investigation file. So it is referred to as suitable.
As suitability.
Suitable, correct.
Yeah, it strikes me that there's, it's a little bit of a different inquiry. I mean, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but the question is whether or not an individual who's not presently serving as a peace officer has all of the requisite background and psychological qualifications and physical qualifications. So they're suitable to be employed as a peace officer. But then, once they are employed as a peace officer, if you engage in conduct, you, you might still be suitable, you might still be qualified and physically fit and mentally fit and all that stuff. So you might be suitable to.
There she is.
To, to be employed as a peace officer, but you've demonstrated conduct that, that itself, the conduct demonstrates that you should not serve as a peace officer in, in California. But anyway, I see our.
Because you're unfit.
Right.
Welcome.
Hello. I'm Melanie Singley, Selection Standards Program.
I'm sorry?
I'm Melanie Singley with Standards Evaluation Bureau.
Thank you.
Standards, Communications. So I just recommended suitability, because we do use it in current regulation, 1953 for background investigations, we use it for med psychs, all of that.
Besides background investigations, are there any other times that you're aware of using suitability versus fitness for duty, either one of them?
The only time I've heard fitness is for fitness for duty evaluations, and that's in, you know, state law, they talk about fitness for duty, and it.
That's when someone's been a police officer, takes a break, and then we don't put them back in being a police officer until we can prove they're fit for duty.
Right, and that's been exclusive to medical, as far as, it's been considered for, at least for peace officer.
Medical and psychological?
Right.
Okay. But, okay.
And I think that's just the issue with the, the term fitness is more of a medical term than suitability. So suitability kind of covers all of that. When you look at the definitions, and you look at all the similar terms, it's, it's a wide range of things. So that was just a suggestion, because fitness, to me, it's the same thing, it brings up medical issues.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Free to go. Or stay. All right, so, show of hands, we're down to the show of hands now. How many would like to have acts of omissions demonstrating a lack of suitability or competence? So hands for suitability. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, suitability wins. So we will take out the word fitness and demonstrating a lack of suitability.
I, I would just suggest between now and May, because we're voting on this in May, correct?
Yes.
Is that if, if Toby identifies something, says, you know what, we, we gotta go with the legal term, because it, it will help us defend it, that.
Okay.
It's brought back to us for those reasons, because I also understand we have to defend this if we decide to bring something forward, so.
So let me give it to Maria in the form she likes it. Hey.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, please, Jackie.
Sorry to throw a curveball into this, thank you, Maria, my assistant. SB2 does specifically say that the bill grants the commission the power to investigate and determine the fitness of any person to serve as a peace officer.
We're so glad you brought that up.
I turn it back over to you, thank you.
And I did notice Toby's big smile over there when she read that, so.
Perhaps we can go back, because again, I mean, listen, I, I'm an employment lawyer, I understand the concerns about, you know, fitness for duty, and we certainly don't want to make it look like we are, you know, proffering a statute that looks at, at, at that, that's certainly not our regulation that, that looks at that, we're certainly not. So it really is a term of art, I mean, maybe we, can we go back to fitness, suitability, or competence?
Yes, so let's, let's start with fitness, lack of fitness, comma, suitability, or competence.
Yeah, I'm going to be the squeaky wheel now. Does that now highlight it to be fitness for duty, physical, by, by separating it out? To me, that means that actually makes it look like it's a fitness for duty.
Really, you think so?
That's just me, though, I'm not the lawyer, I just, I just.
Yeah.
Okay.
So suitability is disappearing entirely again? Fitness of duty? Lack of fitness for duty, of duty? What was the term again, in your, the paper? Was it fitness for or fitness of?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sure, Jackie, you read us something? And they use the word fitness, was it for or of?
Yes, my apologies. So the SB2 reads, the bill would grant the commission the power to investigate and determine the fitness of any person to serve as a peace officer in this state.
Just the word fitness then?
Correct.
No other four?
Correct.
So fitness, lack of fitness or competence. Take out suitability just for the moment, we may put it back in just for the heck of it? Okay. Now, Rick, what do you think?
I'm thinking, what was, I, I'd almost mirror the language as best we can that fits in that sentence that's in that.
So you're saying.
Get rid of competence, yeah. I, I would mirror the language as best we could, since it's in there. It's just, because I, I, I don't know, from a lawyer's perspective, it sets, the legislature is saying you're allowed to go, whatever that language is, investigate for fitness for duty, that's our direction to the commission. Boom, this is what we're doing.
Okay, would you take out competence for a moment? Just so we can all look at it, yes, please.
And, and then I, I came up with that, again, only because that's what the cases say, is, you know, the, the question sort of in the blind is, let's say you've got an entity that regulates professionals, whatever, whatever group of professionals you want to talk about, and that entity is presented with a series of facts, and then takes action against an individual and removes their ability to practice in that profession. The courts will look at it and say, do these, to, to comport with due process, does it show that you, that, did these facts show that you lack fitness or competence to be in practicing the profession? And if it does, then the courts will say, okay, that's, that's sufficient for, for purposes of due process. So, so, and honestly, what I was thinking in terms of competence was, it may be, to me, this is just to me, or you guys think about it, but if we had a set of facts that was really a competence issue and not a fitness issue, that may be something that the commission would ultimately decide not to decertify for. Maybe you'd suspend and then require retraining or something like that, if it was for competence. So if you want to leave it as a lack of fitness, then, you know, you can, you can certainly do that, but.
But if we're going with the definition under SB2, you almost have to take competence out, because that is incorporated within what fitness is, because otherwise you're separating it out into what we would understand fitness to normally be within the profession. We all have fitness for duty policies that are very specific. That's how, in which we send someone for a fitness for duty examination. So if we're going to be consistent with it, I don't think we can separate competence out from fitness, because we need that all-encompassing definition that is given to us within SB2. Because if we're not going to honor what's in SB2, then I would say we shouldn't use the term fitness. But if we're going to honor what's in SB2, then I would say we leave it as fitness without competence, so that there's no question as to what that means.
Okay, so right now, this is what we have. So by a show of hands, do you want to keep exactly what we have? That's vote one. And vote two would be, do you want to change it? So then you'll have to tell us how you'd like to change it. So as it's written now, show of hands if it's, if it's acceptable to you. Okay, that would be everybody. So full speed ahead. So Maria, see? We did it. I'm not sure it was helpful, but we did it at least. Maria, given what you brought up, you've been here the whole day, were there other places where you think we were expecting too much of staff and? Were there other places where you think we were expecting too much of staff and saying, well, we'll see if staff can come up something better? Because we could stay longer. We could stay longer and try to get to the bottom of it. I understand your concern.
The most, the rest of it, I think that's something we can kind of hammer out as a group. It was just the overarching definition, I think, is what we did not want to travel down the wrong path.
Okay.
Delay the process. Thank you for that.
Okay. So I expected to go to five, so the rest of you just mind staying for another. Anything else about this that just isn't feeling quite right? That the way you, kind of your expectations for how today would go versus how today went? Any issue you want to bring up again? Hearing nothing. I will say, I will look forward to seeing all of you in May. Oh, there's more to it. There's a script. But I also want to remind everybody that May is a three-day meeting, so some of you may be wanting to come in the Monday night before and make your reservations for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And now I'm going to read the script.
May, may I?
Please. Also, didn't we want to talk about one of the meetings?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, please.
Yes, in terms of the meetings on the 24th, 25th and 26th, just as a reminder how we were doing it, is the 24th in the afternoon, the advisory group will meet to address these agenda items because they'll be in the in the public agenda. So that's the advisory group. That's not the commission and they're going to look at everything that was done today and give their recommendations. So that is on Tuesday.
Is it, was fitness, excuse me, fitness, finance also on Tuesday? Okay, just advisory.
So just advisory. So just advisory. And then on Wednesday morning, we anticipate Wednesday morning, correct, all day, to go over all of the SB2 regulations and anything SB2 related. Obviously, we'll have all the 21 regulations that are out for public comment now, plus this one for you all to review and perhaps some others. But that's the crux of it, those. And then on Thursday morning, we will come back first thing in the morning and have the regular commission meeting.
Finance first.
Well, yep, we'll start with finance. And then we'll have the commission meeting on Thursday morning. We don't anticipate that'll be super long because obviously we'll have all the SB2 stuff on Wednesday. And we'll be done. We'll do all the formalities on Thursday with the honor guard, hopefully recognizing Commissioner Bowie. Hopefully have a chief's welcoming remarks, so that'll be the regular meeting. But we, we didn't know how much time and effort was going to be needed for SB2. So we wanted to carve out a day because we knew, generally, you're going to have to spend the night anyway for those that are traveling. So that would be that Wednesday night.
So this is April 8th and we're talking about May 24th, so obviously we have some time in between. Right now, based upon everything you know, what time would you guess the meeting on Thursday would end?
1:00, I would say.
1:00, okay. So just let us know if more things keep getting into the agenda and we look like it's going to be a prolonged day.
Okay. And we'll know.
Things come up.
As we get closer. We don't have a lot of agenda items. I don't anticipate for May that are non-SB2 related, but we do have the award ceremony. And we do, you know, do all the other stuff and that can take 45 minutes, as you know.
And you also want to talk about September 22nd?
Yes. So the last meeting and the agenda in the last meeting had a date in August. We had some troubles, some difficulties finding reasonable accommodations at the state rate at the end of August. So we took the liberty in discussion with the chair of moving the meeting to September 22nd. That is the roundtable meeting that we've had for the last two years where we try not to put a lot of commission agenda items through that, that meeting in August, September, where you all can deliberate, discuss, give us direction. It's more of a roundtable discussion in terms of not, you know, going to a ton of agenda items, hopefully none. They're all consent items. So that's in September and that'll be in San Diego.
So just to be clear, on September 22nd, we'd have finance and advisory in the morning? Or what are you thinking?
In September?
September.
I believe it is just the commission.
So no finance, no advisory?
No advisory, no finance, correct.
You said that one's in San Diego?
Yes. I've never heard of a commission meeting without a finance. We just, it's a different kind of meeting?
Yeah, it's a work, I think this was a, I'll give credit to Commissioner Long.
Okay.
Because three years ago, he asked for, if you remember Commissioner Long, a meeting to discuss. We're just prepping you guys for next year because we're going to schedule one of these every two weeks based on everything we did today.
Then people will just need a place to stay on September 21st out of town, but everyone will be gone by the end of the day on the 22nd.
Correct.
Okay.
Obviously, you know, I believe we're allowing and setting up the reservations for two nights for those that need to. We're not going to require somebody to come, work from nine to five and then take a flight at nine o'clock. If they want to fly home, so be it, or travel home.
Okay. Any comments about the last two things that Manny told us about? Okay, let me read a little more. As this was the, back to serious misconduct, as this was the last item on the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent items? Thank you. Any questions, comments? That motion passes. We, just again, to go over the upcoming meetings, May 24th through 26th, the three-day meeting is up here. September 22nd is a special meeting down in San Diego. November 30th through December 1st, 2022 is back up here in West Sacramento. March 1st, 2023 through March 2nd is TBD. June 7th through June 8th, 2023 will be back in West Sacramento. Manny, is there anything else?
Not for me, no. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else? Okay. Great work, everyone. Tremendous work, tremendous listening, communicating. I think we got some great things done today. Thank you all. What's that?
I'm concerned we'd be herding squirrels today and you did a magnificent job of herding the squirrels. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.